Good morning. We're going to call this Tampa City Council meeting to order, and I'm going to yield to Councilwoman Capin.
Oh, you do it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Deere.
I would ask for the Honorable Judge Greg Holder to please come up for the morning prayer. Judge Greg Holder is a judge in the 13th Judicial Circuit here in Hillsborough County, Florida. Judge Holder began his career in the military. He served in the United States Air Force from 1976 to 1988, and then in the Air Force Reserve until 2004. He served in various capacities, including engineer, part of the Legal Education Program, Assistant and later Deputy Chief, or strike that, Staff Judge Advocate, Area Defense Counsel, and a Military Judge. He is also a Colonel in the United States Air Force Reserve, retired. Judge Holder began his civilian law career in 1988, and six years later, he was elected to the Hillsborough County Court where he took office in 1995. He was elected to the Circuit Court the following year. And I like Judge Holder so much that when I was sworn in, I asked him to swear me in. So if everybody could please stand up for the prayer and remain standing for the pledge.
Today, we pray, "O God, our Father, Thou Searcher of men's hearts, help us to draw near to Thee in sincerity and truth. May our religion be filled with gladness, and may our worship of Thee be natural. Strengthen and increase our admiration for honest dealing and clean thinking, and suffer not our hatred of hypocrisy and pretense ever to diminish. Encourage us in our endeavors to live above the common level of life. Make us to choose the harder right instead of the easier wrong, and never to be content with a half-truth when the whole can be won. Endow us with courage that is born of loyalty to all that is noble and worthy, that scorns to compromise with vice and injustice, and knows no fear when truth and right are in jeopardy." All of which we ask in the name of the great friend and master of all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unnumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Roll call.
Suarez.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Ready.
Here.
Capin.
Present.
Miranda.
Here.
And Deere.
Here.
All right, can we get a motion for the approval of agenda? I got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, settled by Mr. Miranda. All who favor that motion say aye.
Aye.
Move opposed. Okay, we go to ceremony activities. Item number one, Mr. Miranda.
Thanks, sir. I wanted to pull something from the consented number. I just decided right now, when I looked at it again.
Where's Gloria?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Where's Gloria? Oh, Gloria. I just want to give you a recognition like that, Gloria. You know, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of Tampa City Council, it's my pleasure to be here today. I grew up with Gloria. Different times, I'm a little older than her, about 25 years. And Gloria started way back when there was no TVs here, I believe. I believe in the office of the city council office, there was one phone. There was no city council offices. I remember there was a mimeograph machine that you had to run off the agendas with. And through all that, every time Gloria comes here, and I hate to admit to this because she's one of the persons, I shouldn't hate to admit it, but I keep it to myself, one of the persons that when she comes to this podium, I always trust her wisdom, her knowledge, her understanding, and her fairness above all. And today, I'm presenting on behalf of the Tampa City Council, commendation to Gloria Moreta. In recognition of Gloria Moreta, Department Coordination Manager, on her retirement from the City of Tampa, for her loyalty and devotion to this community, set an example for all of us to emulate. We have proudly served the city, she has proudly served the city for 35 years, with unwavering passion and dedication. You have been a mentor and a friend to countless professionals and citizens, helping each of them improve the knowledge of the Tampa ever-changing zoning code. During your tenure, you have successfully worked with administration of five city mayors, including the Honorable Bob Martinez, later became the Governor of the State of Florida, Sandra Friedman, De Greco, Pam Oreo, and Bob Buckhorn. You have been patiently working so hard with at least 35 of us council members. I don't know if I ever worked with 35, but you have, throughout the zoning process and helping them make sound decisions. You have earned the reputation of being our legal department's secret weapon, unflappable, and on the witness stand, cool, calm, collected, and always, always the epitome of a professional city servant, in control of the nuisance and interpretation of these laws and codes that you have to work with. And for that reason, Gloria, I proudly, but sadly also, sad because you're leaving the city, as one of the loyalist employees I've ever worked with, for your 35 years of service, the City of Tampa commendates you with this commendation to Gloria Moreta for 35 years of service. Thank you very much.
Way Gloria need more.
See, for once, I get to elbow her off of the podium. Gloria started in the zoning office 35 years ago, more or less. In some respects, it may seem like 100 years. If you can imagine dealing with this situation, a condition, an unusual event, a difficult combination of circumstances, Gloria's dealt with it. If you can imagine any city council not relying upon Gloria for a matter-of-fact, straightforward answer, that was beat Gloria. Can you imagine beginning to count the number of issues that she's dealt with, and the number of petitions and citizens she's assisted? Gloria's probably seen it all. Perhaps not everything, but beyond the imagination and most of the perception of the everyday citizen. She's constantly been the cornerstone of the city land department, land development coordination. A constant and valuable resource, Gloria is well-known for never coloring her opinion to curry favor or to assuage some influential group or petitioner, or the city council for that matter. Even her own staff recognizes that her opinion is the decision, regardless of where it goes. She's made her mark, the city is she loved so well, and all of the people that she's interacted with. A courageous and dedicated city employee who is well-known for commitment to being fair and reasonable. One might fault or challenge the decision, however, no one could ever challenge her integrity. Gloria worked her way through the system, living and learning its intricacies through hands-on experience. The city code has changed numerous times, and throughout those changes, Gloria has remained the go-to person for answers, interpretations, and analysis. She's been the stalwart member of the City Tampa Legal Team as their expert witness. Gloria has been a friend and a fixture of the city since 1984. She casts a long shadow and will leave a large hole to be filled by her successor. There are far too many stories and experiences to be told and retold regarding Gloria, but suffice it to say that her word is her bond and her honesty beyond reproach. Enjoy your well-deserved retirement, however, many of us reserve the right to assist you in your return to City Hall, should you ever get bored. More than anything else, I'm proud to say and call Gloria my friend. One of the things that epitomizes Gloria's integrity, and several years ago, Monsignor Higgins asked to write 10 essential elements of what makes a great person, and these are the following: Do more for your community than it asks of you. Give more, take less. Look to the future and make it better than the past. Don't be afraid of failure, success is built upon failure. Be grateful for what you have, so many others have less. Never forget you can make a difference. Maintain faith and courage, they are fundamental elements that will sustain you. Look for the best in others and you will find it in yourself. Strive for excellence and still hope, empower the right, vanquish the wrong. Love, care, and nurture your family, it's the foundation of the future generation. Give thanks to God every day for what you have, pray frequently, live honestly. Gloria has epitomized all of those things, and for that, I'm proud to say she's my friend.
A lot of us are behind. I have a lot of things to say, but I'll keep it short because I don't want to cry. We've already cried a lot this morning. Every one of these faces you see out here has been touched by this wonderful person, and we've learned so much from her. And she's more than a friend to a lot of us. She is like a mother or a sister, a best friend, and someone we would go to with our problems, and the first person I call when I need something. And she's mentored all of us in different ways, whether it's zoning, trees, life, anything. And it's just not going to be the same without you.
Counsel, you know, I don't know-
Before you begin, anyone else wish to say something? The audience like to say something at this time?
Looks like somebody's coming up.
You know, I really-
Charlie and Steve said it all, I mean Gloria, the best. On behalf of the Association, just like to thank you. Everybody trusted you.
I appreciate that.
We'll see you under the wall.
It's been a privilege, Counsel. I don't know that I can say too much. I always try to be very stoic when I'm before you. But I love, my family's here. They've supported me because I can tell you, working with Counsel, a lot of hours that go into being here, and they've always been there for me. I wish my mother was here. She was instrumental in, you know, my life. I'm from Tampa, born, raised here. Getting the job with the City of Tampa was a blessing. And it's not just because I found the work so interesting, but the people are wonderful, and my staff, all of them. I don't know what I'd do without them. I want to especially thank Tom Snelling couldn't be here today, Kathy Coyle. They mean so much to me. All my staff does. And I just want to thank you for the respect you've shown my staff. We probably have more FaceTime before City Council than just about anybody. And I know we don't tell you what you want to hear all the time, but we try to be as straightforward as we can. And I appreciate the respect you've shown me and my staff.
For your immediate members of the family, would you have them to be standing, be recognized? The members of your family?
My family.
Introduce them, please.
My son, Ben. My husband, Larry Speed. And this is my granddaughter, Piper. That's Parker down there, and Kristen. And then I believe my sisters were two, Lydia and her husband, Chris.
Please stand, if you're here, please stand.
They're back there somewhere.
Oh, okay.
Gloria, sitting up here for the past, in my case, for eight years, and in some cases, people for longer, we are called upon often to make difficult decisions. And no one in this city has been more reliable as a voice of reason than you in giving us guidance in terms of how to proceed. And I have to tell you that the key to it, the thing that I think totally distinguishes you, is the level of integrity and ethics that you bring to every decision that comes up here. There is not one time in the thousands of cases that we have reviewed that anyone has ever intimated that the opinion that was brought to this podium by you was not the professional, just the facts, not influenced, not predetermined, always the decision based on the law and on the code. And I cannot tell you what your level of integrity has meant to the process that we have been involved with. It is just absolutely critical. And for people who do public service, who work in government, you are the shining example of exactly what everyone who serves the people should seek to be. A truth-teller with integrity and ethics, who may not always tell us what we want to hear, but always gives it to us straight. I cannot express to you enough how much I appreciate it, and I know that the citizens who may not know what you do every day appreciate it too.
Thank you.
Mr. Suarez.
Thank you, Chair. You know, Gloria, I did not want to see you cry, but I was happy to see that your face had changed because all the eight years that I've been on Counsel, when you said stoic, a couple of times, I thought we were going to get a mirror and see if you were breathing because your, I know your staff knows this, because your face completely does not move whatsoever when you're presenting a case to us. Everything that Mr. Cohen said is absolutely true, which is that you are looking at the code in relation to our ordinances, our comprehensive plan, and how you have determined whether or not it fits in. And many times, we didn't agree with you, but at the same time, we never doubted your ability. I tell you what, if you could teach your staff, everybody that comes after you, how to stay as still as possible as you do, and be able to not make up, like the expression you're making right now, which is completely, gosh Gloria, you know, I'm praising you now. I mean, you can smile a little bit. But, you know, to see how you presented to us every single time, right down the middle, it was never, ever about you, it was never, ever about the personalities involved, and sometimes we had some contentious cases up here. It was always about what does the code say, what does the comprehensive plan say, how are we going to be able to deal with it? And I will tell you, I wish that you were sticking around for the new Counsel, because when you do not know land use, and you have never done it before, it's extremely difficult and needs expertise to teach the people that are elected officials here to learn what they need to look for in order to become effective public servants. Unfortunately, you're not going to be here. Your staff is going to have an incredibly hard job now without you around, not only because of all the things that you've done behind the scenes, but the things that you've done before us at Counsel. Thank you so much for your service of 35 years. I thought for sure you were going to beat Mary Bryan's record, but obviously, you couldn't get there. You know, you only had a few more years to beat her record. But, you know, frankly, I'm very happy that you were here and your family was here to see this, and I hope that they know how much we appreciate the time you took away from your family in order to spend time with us. So thank you so much and for your services at the City of Tampa.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Maniscalco.
I just want to say that, you know, you are truly irreplaceable. I know there's a lot of people with a lot of knowledge that you've mentored, but there will only be one Gloria Moreta. And I've only been here for four years, but it's been an honor to work with you. I've actually learned a lot from you. I know I'm quiet up here, but you've done an amazing job. And when I bring up the City of Tampa family, what you see here, all the people behind you here that love you and support you, and all the tears show just how much they care about you and what a treasure you are to this community. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
Mr. Deere.
Yeah, I've actually been here less time than Counsel Maniscalco, about two years. And your opinions and the way that you go about things has really been very a great guiding method and path for me, because, you know, land use is certainly not easy, particularly when you come from my background as a lawyer, you're careful to opine on things that you don't know about, and there are many, many, many things that are not easily known in land use, and you always make it very accessible, and you do so with a temperament that's very good. I mean, that's really what you bring to the table, is not only your professionalism, but very, very good temperament, and often dealing with parties where there's a lot of money potentially in dispute, a lot of power in dispute, and more than anything, a lot of passion in dispute, and you respond to that with just top-notch temperament. So thank you for your service.
Mr. Capin.
Yes, Gloria Moreta. Stoic, just the facts, Gloria, invaluable, that's it. Thank you for your service.
Let me sum it up by saying that, you know, I was sitting here, and when you were speaking, I was saying to myself that I heard you speak more today than at a land use. Normally, you get up there and you got three or four words, and that's it. And we respect it, and take your advice, and move on. You never get no challenge from us. So, but I truly want to say to you that you're a true professional, and that you're going to be truly missed. It's going to be a great loss to the city, and it's going to be a great loss to the new councils coming in, because they're losing a lot of experience. And not having that one-on-one contact and one-on-one communication with you, to understand the land use and the zoning and all that sort of stuff, they going to find out that it's going to be a difficult process. And it's going to be difficult to learn all this, not having someone with as vast experience as you. So I wish you well, I wish you the best, but one thing I will say if I was you, if Migalina is going to interfere with our agenda to give you a presentation, he should at least give you a certificate of Yummy Yummy House. He comes here and he give the certificate of Yummy Yummy House. Ask him for your Yummy Yummy House certificate. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you very much, and help. Yes, there's a lot of stuff.
All right, we-
I have.
Yeah, yes, sir, okay, thank you.
Like we here right now. Sorry, I have another two. Mr. Deere.
Gloria's going to be missed.
It is my great pleasure here to have Mr. Howard Altman here with us for a Tampa City Council commendation. Before I give this to Mr. Altman, I wanted to recognize some of the people who have come here to honor Howard. First, Mr. Michael Kirk with the Gold Star Mothers and Fathers, Mr. Ben Ritter who's here, Judge Greg Holder, Colonel D.J. Reyes, Mr. Tony Ellsworth-Williams, and Mr. Mike Odell with Veterans Helping Veterans, as well as I know other people are here for Mr. Altman. All of us here who live in the City of Tampa and in this area know of the great work that Howard does. Howard is not just a journalist, he is really a person who is a journalist really for our times. It's a very, very unique mission that he has. Over about the last 17 or 18 years, we have had about 17 or 18 years of constant combat and sacrifices by our military families. Between 1% and 2% of the American people are active-duty military, and about 7% of our population has ever worn the uniform of the United States Military. The rest of us generally go on our lives, and the sacrifices that are put on by that small percentage of the population are not with us every single day. It is the job of Mr. Howard Altman to make sure that those sacrifices are known by us every single day. So many names we would not know about if it wasn't for the hard work and dedicated service of Mr. Howard Altman. I think about myself. If it wasn't for the stories done by Mr. Howard Altman, I would have never gotten involved in the Warrior Games. I would have never known who Mike Nicholson was, and all these different kinds of great endeavors that are done. We would never know who Major Andre Sokeef is, a young gentleman who grew up here in Tampa, was a USF graduate who recently gave his life in a helicopter crash in Iraq. So Mr. Howard Altman is an individual who really, really gives back to the community so much. He is leaving to become the editor of the Military Times, and it is a real tremendous loss for the Tampa area because he is an individual whose focus in journalism is so very, very focused. I found a good quote that I think really talks about what Howard does with his career, is from actually Patrick Henry, I found, and it goes, "Are we disposed to be of the number of those who having eyes see not, and having ears hear not, the things which so nearly concern their temporal salvation?" Temporal salvation is like our secular safety, and all too often, we hear not, we think not, we see not, those who give 100% of their lives protecting us. And that's what Howard focuses on. And for that and so much, it is our pleasure to present to Mr. Howard Altman this Tampa City Council commendation. So Howard, if you want to say a few words.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
This is a deep honor. This is a very deep honor, and so too are the folks who showed up, they've worked with to cover veterans, to cover suicide issues, to cover Gold Stars, to cover disabled, to cover Operation Helping Hand, Veterans Treatment Court, Vietnam Veterans, and everybody else. It's a great community. It's been an honor to cover the Gold Star families. One of my key jobs is to remind people that regardless of what you think about the military, there are, and regardless of what you think about, sorry, regardless of what you think about the military, these men and women are serving in your name and in your dime, and you should never forget that's going on. So really, this is a great honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Howard. And we want to, and Mike- And Mike Odell with Veterans Helping Veterans, the former president of the Vietnam Veterans of America, want to present to you some coins.
Oh, wow.
I have one here from our chapter of the Vietnam Veterans.
Oh, thank you.
I was asked to give to you from our current president, and this is the one that's the 100th anniversary of the American Legion. This is from our post here in Tampa, Post 5.
Thank you. And so, by the way, we're having a going-away party tomorrow at Fort Meade Field, so now I'm covered. Thank you very much. It's been a great honor to, I wish I had some points to give out. I didn't have any points.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you very much. It's a great honor to have, my first time at City Council, to be honored in this way. So I very much thank you guys. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Quick question, Mr. Altman. And Howard. Mr. Altman, are you a veteran also?
No, no, I'm a lifelong civilian.
Okay, true. One of my favorite books of all time is The Nightingale Song, and you may have read it before, which was by an ex, you know, Marine, and talked about other Annapolis graduates that had gone through. If you have not read it, you should. It was a Washington Post writer that had written that book. But in addition, you're going to be at the Military Times, correct?
Yeah, I'll be managing editor at Military Times. I leave the Times on the 12th and start on the 15th.
Now, are you going to be based in DC then?
Yeah, Tyson's Corner.
Okay, well, enjoy your time there. Don't forget us here in Tampa.
I can't, I've got a lot of great friends here, great community, and I'm going to miss the sunsets and-
And it's always important, not only to cover the military in terms of the veterans, but in terms of what the military is doing, and what we have to be vigilant about is not only what we have done, but what we have not done for the people that serve our country.
And their families too, and the caregivers.
Thank you, sir. Enjoy the rest of your career.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks. Well, thank you.
I got pictures outside.
Yeah, yeah. All right, we go to item number three. Mr. Maniscalco.
Yes, I'd like to bring up Mr. Vince Pardo. I think it's the first time that I before you as a private citizen since I retired three years ago, so it's nice to see you. In 1984, in the centennial year of the Italian Club, as a special project, we initiated a request to have a sister city with Italy. And after much deliberation, the capital of the province of Argogento was selected because about 90% of the Italian immigrants that immigrated to Tampa came from three or four villages in that province. Province is like a county. Province is like a county. So we have held that relationship. In 1991, the mayor of Argogento, about 12 of his staff and about 24 folkloric dancers and musicians descended on Tampa. We hosted them for a little over a week. And the following year, in 1992, I had the pleasure of taking Mayor Sandy Friedman and the delegation from Tampa for that reciprocal visit. And the signing was complete. So we have fostered this relationship for 28 years now. And during that time, we have had multitude of cultural exchanges with the dancers, musicians coming over, training people in workshops, both in the public schools and private schools and in private dance studios. The Tampa Museum of Art had probably the largest attendance of any show they had when we hosted the Magna Greca Project. Items of antiquities that had never even gone to the mainland in Italy were in Tampa, Florida. And only two cities in the United States here in Cleveland because the director of antiquities at our museum had left and gone to Cleveland, so those two. So we really enjoyed a good relationship. Last year, I was able to take a delegation of about 21 people. Council Maniscalco intertwined with us. He was visiting his family in the province. And Mayor Buckhorn met with three mayors in that area, just to solidify. Santa Stefano, Alessandria, and Cinchana. One of the connections we made, and I'm going to ask Al Beluccia, Vice Chairman of Tampa Argogento Sister Cities. And I'm presenting today as President of Tampa Argogento Sister Cities Committee. And like also for Catherine Pescanti. If she would like to come up. Come up. This trio has been the one that has been pretty much putting together the visit that we are discussing today. I give credit to Al Beluccia. When we were on that visit, he made his, because of his family, made connection with the school in Bivona. Bivona is like a regional school. So it covers all the towns that we're familiar here in Santa Stefano, Alessandria, et cetera. So with that connection, we continued. And Catherine was our connection with the school board. She's a Gaither High School Italian instructor there. And culminating in the visit this week of eight students from the Luigi Perindella Culinary Institute. They're here to teach about Sicilian cooking and cuisine. And they're here to learn some of the practices of food preparation and serving that we do here. That culmination, after several couple of months of working, several months of working, culminated in their visit this week. We will be meeting with the mayor about 11 o'clock, just to do a little exchange. We were pleased, I just want to mention a couple of names. We have Thomas Morel, who's the principal of Gaither High School, which has been the central focus for the school board. Tom, if you could stand, please. Thank you. Recognize him in doing that. And what I wanted to do was to introduce you to the mayor of Bivona. He's here, Mr. Milco Cina. He's here with his vice mayor, Salvador Cutro. And a councilperson from Bivona, Angelo Cannella.
Tanto buongiorno a tutti.
Good morning to everybody.
Grazie di averci accolto nel vostro consiglio.
Thank you for welcoming us to your City Council.
Porto i saluti dell'amministrazione comunale che rappresento come sindaco di Bivona e come presidente dell'unione dei comuni anche dei comuni di Alessandra della Rocca, Cinjana, Sanbiagio Platini, e Santo Stefano.
I bring the salute from the City Council of Bivona and Alessandria and Santo Stefano.
E Sanbiagio Platini.
And Santa Geoplatina.
E Cinjana.
And Sanjana.
Siamo veramente contenti di essere qui in questa bellissima cittadina.
We're really happy to be in this beautiful city.
Ci accomunano, ci accomuna una cosa fondamentale a Tampa e alla nostra Sicilia, la bellezza.
One thing unites us between Tampa and Sicily, and it is the beauty of both places.
Perché questo è veramente un bellissimo territorio. È stato fatto un lavoro straordinario della Professorezza Pescante assieme all'Istituto Pirandello di Bivona.
This has been a beautiful relationship held by Mrs. Pescanti and by the Institute Luigi Pirandello of Bivona.
Nel fare questo giomelaggio tra le scuole dove abbiamo portato delle eccellenze del nostro territorio.
Where we brought some excellence from our territory.
Questa cittadina ospita tantissime persone che vengono dalla Sicilia. Generazioni che sono ormai trasferite.
This city of Tampa hosts generations of people from Sicily.
Che si sono trasferiti a Tampa.
Who transferred to Tampa.
E quindi ci accomuna veramente lo stare, diciamo, lo stare assieme deve essere un lavoro che è stato fatto da Vincent De Pardo con il club italiano, con il museo italiano. È stato un lavoro straordinario.
The work that has been done by Vince Pardo and by the Museum of Tampa is an extraordinary work.
Perché ha dato la possibilità a tanti italiani che si sono trasferiti in questo bellissimo posto proprio di essere ancora vicini alle proprie rive.
It gave the possibility to all the Italians who transferred here to be close to their roots.
Quindi nell'invitarvi tutti nella nostra bellissima regione Sicilia.
So we do want to invite all of you to our beautiful region of Sicily.
Vi ringrazio per la vostra ospitalità.
And we thank you for your hospitality.
I would like if we could just ask our students. We have eight students here, if I didn't mention that.
We also have three from Gaither coming in.
And three from Gaither High School, which has been our central.
Gaither High School and Bivona students. So thank you to Bivona di El Capi.
And we also have five administrators from the school. Both the chef, the culinary teacher, the principal. The principal of the school we've been working with is Giovanna Bubello. She's not here because she is running for mayor of Alessandro de Rocca. And I know all of you appreciate being absent during election time. So she was not able to be here today, but she did. The vice principal is Antonella Dentin. And I think she has just had a little something for the council. Would it be brief? I think I was. Any questions? We would love to.
Mr. Maniscalco.
And if I could say it in Italian, since of course, you know, the group.
We need to add about the culinary part. The culinary, that they're cooking for all the schools and for the.
Yes, I mentioned about the culinary teaching. They are still doing demonstrations both at schools, at sickles, and the Gaither High School. They'll be doing a demonstration at the Festivaliana on Saturday at 12:30 in Centennial Park. Doing that area. And they have also been shadowing at several restaurants. They help the staff of the Italian Club cook for their, for the, for this weekend's activities going on there. So they really had both a private nonprofit and professional restaurant experience while they've been here, as well as teaching some of the things that they do.
Buongiorno.
Good morning.
Sono onorata e commossa di essere presente oggi qua.
I am honored and excited to be here today.
Representare la mia scuola è un momento molto forte per me.
Representing my school is a very strong moment for me.
Sapendo anche quanto la nostra dirigente ci teneva ad essere presente oggi qua in questo momento.
And also knowing how the principal did want to be here today.
La nostra preside è stata tartenuta per un impegno politico, candidato a sindaco di Alessandra della Rocca.
She has been held back because she is running for mayor.
Devo ringraziare l'amministrazione comunale per l'accoglienza che ci ha riservato.
I want to thank the City Council for welcoming us.
La Professorezza Pescante.
Mrs. Pescanti.
Beluccia.
Mr. Beluccia.
E il Pardo.
And Mr. Pardo.
Che ha dato la possibilità ai nostri ragazzi di vivere un'esperienza unica.
That gave our students the possibility of living this unique experience.
Credo che sia l'unica scuola almeno di quelle che conosco comunque della Sicilia ad aver fatto un giomelaggio con gli Stati Uniti.
I think this is the first school that I know of in Sicily that has done this sister cities coordination with the school, coming to the United States.
La preside ha inviato dei piccoli omaggi.
The principal has sent you some small gifts.
Un ricettario di alcune ricette antiche.
Recipes of some ancient recipes, food recipes.
Con ingredienti molto semplici che voi avete qua in grande quantità.
With simple ingredients that you have in great quantity here in Tampa.
Nella speranza di lasciare un nostro ricordo.
We would like to leave our little gift on my part.
Della nostra scuola, dei nostri ragazzi che sono stati felicissimi in questi giorni.
And the students have been very happy these days and thank you as well.
E spero tanto che questo sia un progetto che possa andare avanti.
And I hope that this project will continue.
Dopo aver ospitato la vostra scuola da noi.
And welcoming your school in Sicily.
Grazie.
Thank you.
Passing around some video and some of those. The mayor has also brought a gift from Bivona. A hand-painted glazed plate. And two of the banners for, I guess, a three. And some more books on there. So we'll leave this for the council, for presenting in the sister cities room downstairs. And we'd be proud to display that with the rest of our council. Appreciate your indulgence. Hope we kept the right timeframe. And unless you have any questions, we are pleased with our presentation.
No, real quick and in Italian for the group. Benvenute a Tampa tutti, un piacere e un'ora per essere qui con noi. Io sono figlio di un siciliano nato ad Alessandra della Rocca. La storia di Tampa è così importante perché la nostra fondazione è stata costruita con le mani di tanti immigranti siciliani. Benvenute e spero che la stanno passando bene. Ci vediamo spesso quando noi viaggiamo e torniamo in Sicilia. Grazie.
Thank you very much. Let me take interview on the next.
Mr. Chairman, since it was done in English, translated in Italian, spoken Italian, la we say in Espanol. Muchisima grazia al card per stare qui con todos delegado de su familia, de su reazione d'Italia. E gli studenti che stanno godutlando la comida. Pero estoy pretendiendo una cosa más. ¿A dónde está la prueba de la comida? ¿La muestra dónde está? Pero te gusta que está como yo, calvo. Un placer a conocer a todos ustedes que se divierten aquí en ciudad. Viva Italia.
All right. Mr. Pardo, anything else?
No, but the councilman just found a cousin. Right, that's how that's all. With April.
Oh, okay. Yeah. All right.
I'm going to say something.
Go ahead.
Guido. You're the first person, other than my grandmother, that I ever heard that speaks both English, Spanish, and Sicilian. Amazing. Good to hear it.
My father.
My grandmother did that.
My father and I only speak in Italian, so I have that constant practice. And then, you know, with other family members, Spanish and, so, you know, it's beneficial.
Unfortunately, my grandmother would speak to us in Spanish or Sicilian and we'd answer in English. So we forgot to practice. But I'm glad.
I just want to know if you're going to translate this.
The rest will. Yeah. We'll have a cooking.
I like what I see in here, but I.
It's all good.
Okay. Ms. Capin, you wanted to.
Yes, sir. On the consent agenda number 39. It's just that I'd like to have either a staff report or be briefed on itself 400. Is it 400 acres? 450 acres that we're selling? And I just, I feel like we should know a little bit more about this. That's it. So I'd like to pull it for discussion. Thank you for indulging council members.
If you want to make a motion.
Yes, that's my motion.
All right, got a motion. Councilwoman Capin is asking about Councilman Quinn, pull item number 39 for staff report discussion.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right. At this time, we go to public comments. Mr. Shepherd.
The Tampa City Council welcomes public comment at this time. Thirty minutes have been set aside this morning for citizens speaking about matters not set for a public hearing. If you are here to speak on a matter that is set for a public hearing, you will have that opportunity later during today's meeting. Speakers addressing items on the agenda are given preference before citizens speaking on non-agenda matters. Each speaker is given three minutes. Please begin by stating your name for the record. And it is requested that your comments are not directed personally to a council member or staff member, but rather issues directed to the council as a body. City Council appreciates your cooperation in maintaining orderly conduct and proper decorum. Thank you.
For the living will, for the living record, I am Sovereign Despide, King Johnny Bernard, uniformed commercial code 308. I'm here to be briefing within what's going on within the global civil war between the commercial entities and, you know, us royal noble living true tribunal, legit courts and stuff. Okay. This is what's going on. Now, look with law enforcement. Yes, I am doing a joint jurisdictional things because like when the commercial scene set up, you had forgot about your agreement and tried to take over all your people. And tried to take over your leaders and tried to take over your systems. You came out with this category called black and white to start fights amongst all your people in all of your lands. The term black and white is no longer allowed to be used on this globe because you're using it to create discrimination, racism, and hate throughout all of your lands. You have created fraudulent systems using this. Now, to be known black and white, that makes you a servant, not over your leaders, not over your rulers. And harassing your leaders while you traffic money throughout all my lands do not work. Blue campaign stays on the globe. And Blue Star and corruption now stays on the globe. As global homeland, we're not going to bite into any of the hypocrisy lies that your false religion has brought on. What is a true religion? A man's walk of his life. Not Christian, not Muslim, not Jew. You guys are the ones that ran out from us. Ran out from us indigenous, ran out from us ancient ones, ran out from us, how you say? Tibetan, Anubian, indigenous, Anubian, original, true kings and queens, royal spiritualists, shaman, head of all households, head of all governments, head of all religions, head of all systems. Knowing that we are the head of your systems, how do you come and try to override the provider when you are a debtor, threatening your creditor? Knowing darn well that you need money from that creditor. You guys really need to end the hate on this globe. It ain't doing none of you good. It ain't doing Satan any good either. He's laughing, saying, watch how many foods come down here with him. Jesus, loose for fall and Christ, way of the pope. It's written in your history books. Go and become educated. Don't believe a black man or a white man. Go and become educated. If you don't become educated, they're going to keep lying to you. You're going to get fooled by the fraudulent courthouses, get fooled by the fraudulent banks, get fooled by the fraudulent grocery store. You better start farming and become a gardener. Get back the natural ways. Learn real love, learn real peace. Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Tampa Council. My name is Diana Klein. I'm here today on behalf of our preborn neighbors who are being murdered in Tampa. Every week, about 200 babies are murdered under your watch and jurisdiction. It's time to end the bloodshed and punish those who are murdering these babies. I have an official diagram that is used to train medical students on how to kill babies in the womb. A cannula is what's used to be inserted into the cervix, into the uterus, where the baby is suctioned out and killed in his abode. And then they take a curette, a sharp knife, to finish scraping out all the baby body parts. There's an assistant killer who helps to identify all the baby body parts. And then they put them back together. they put them back together so they make sure they got them all. You can see the difference here in this photograph between a safe baby and a murdered baby in the womb. So it's time to end this bloodshed. You have a God ordained duty to preserve justice and to punish this evil. Roe versus Wade is not a law. It's a fundamentally flawed court opinion. That's all it is. There is nowhere in our constitution, either on the federal level, the state level, that gives any mother the right to murder her baby in the womb. Every baby in the womb is our posterity. And if you read the preamble of the Constitution, it says that we, as a people, we give these rights. We want to bestow these liberties to our posterity of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So we need to stop this bloodshed. I did a little bit of research and found out about Tampa approximately two years ago, decriminalized marijuana. Now, the same process that you as a council, as you as a governing body use to decriminalize marijuana is the same process that you would use to interpose and to criminalize murder in the womb here in Tampa. It's under your jurisdiction. You have the right to do that. It's your God ordained duty to do that, to protect everybody in the city. This beautiful city, as we heard our Italian neighbors tell us, is a beautiful city, but it's bloodstained with the shedding of the innocent blood of thousands of babies that are murdered every year here in Tampa in Hillsboro County. This bloodshed needs to end. You can learn more about the doctrine of the lesser magistrate at DefyTyrants.com. You can also go to FreeTheStates.com and find out more about how people are using to enact laws that will, on the state level, criminalize it. But you have a duty to do it. You can do it here and make this a sanctuary city for our preborn babies. There's lots of help for women here in Tampa alone who are with child, who can get prenatal care. Lots of people care about these mothers who are with child. And check my website. Thank you.
Mentesna, Tampa, Florida. Hate to be a bubbleburster, but we had what they say, the Italian or Sicilian, a sister or brotherhood type situation that came before the Tampa City Council to say some type of relationship with Tampa. But one thing everyone needs to know is, before you go anywhere, it should always be some sensitivity training. Before you go anywhere, it should always be some sensitivity training. And you should always bring out, see if you're unaware, if you're uninformed, you don't know what's going on. The big thing going on right now in Europe and in Italy and in other places is the mockery of African players, black athletes. When black athletes are on the football field, the white people in the stands making insulting remarks, making monkey marks, and throwing bananas out on the field at us. So, and then you welcome them here is like overlook that. This city council have not been responsible or accountable to African people in any way whatsoever. We're 26% of the city's population. We've never had a representative for District Five or other districts that's mostly African populated to represent our interests. And black people come down here on the regular to say what we're opposed to, what's going on in our communities, police violence. We're hearing it nine in the news, 10 officers that's accused of something, or racist mayor that's calling African women bitches, that's calling for the lynching of an African man before he even go to trial. And nobody up there say or do anything. Absolutely, positively, nothing. You got someone now from the police department running for mayor that say crime's down 70%. Crime is down 70%. If crime is down 70%, then they should have, in that process, released 70% of the officers in the police department from their duties and responsibilities. But unsolved murders is up about 600 or 700%, especially in the black community. Lots of grieving mothers and fathers and brothers and sisters taking place. That need to stop. This city council need to be more responsive to the needs of the people, and that's all the people.
Kevin O'Hare, 4931, Copper Canyon Boulevard, Valrico, Florida. I believe I signed up for the wrong agenda items, so I figured I'd just give a general public comment here. I'm here to ask on behalf of All for Transportation for your support and approval of the interlocal agreement. This is the first step in implementing the All for Transportation Plan that city voters overwhelmingly voted for this past November. Just this past week, the Hart Board of Directors, the MPO Board, as well as the Temple Terrace City Council, and just yesterday, the Board of County Commissioners, have all voted to approve and entered into this agreement. This is, like I said, the first step in implementing what voters approved for, so I implore you to please vote in approval of the interlocal agreement and satisfy the will of the voters. Thank you.
All right, anyone else which speak during public comments? I'm seeing none. Do we have any requests for public reconsideration for legislative matters? I'm seeing none. Go to committee reports. It's an honor to recognize Mr. Charlie Miranda for public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I move items four through six.
Second.
Six, the sixth been pulled.
Yes, I'm sorry, sixth been pulled.
So second for four and five.
Right. Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, park recreation, Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I move items seven through 11.
Second.
I got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Vera. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, go to public works.
Yes.
Mr. Maniscalco.
Move items 12 through 20.
Second.
All right, got a motion from.
With the substitute resolution on number 19.
Got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, go to Finance Committee, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move items 21 through 30.
Okay, got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Miranda. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, building is on it, Mr. Vera.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move item 31 and 41 through 46 with continuances sought for 32 through 38, and 39 being pulled by Councilwoman Capeen.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Mr. Vera, second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Could you just leave the date on 40 is also wait for 18? Is it? Okay, so there's a. My fault is 40.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, transportation, Mr. Suarez.
Thank you, Chair. Before I move these items, items 50, 51, 52, and 53 all deal with the shared motorized scooter pilot program. Hopefully, we'll get this done and be able to see them out on the streets. In saying that, numbers 51, 52, and 53, we are looking at, requesting that the operating agreement and exhibits for A, B, and C are attached to those resolutions. And having said all that, I'd like to move items 47 through 53.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Mr. Suarez.
I just want to show that.
49 needs to be continued? I apologize. So let me move all those except for 49, which will be continued until, let's see, did they request? There's a big addendum here. What is it? April 19? April 18?
April 18.
Okay, all, moving all those items, including those other items as mentioned previously, and 49 will be continued until April 18.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is a pilot program, and I'll be supporting it on the pilot program. I don't know whether I'll support it or not. Later on, I have just knowledge that when you have scooters and walkers on the same sidewalk and the state doesn't allow them on the street, there's a problem coming up. And there's a lot of cities who've had them in the past, and some are doing well, some are not. So I'm just going to hold my support this now, but I may not support it when it comes back to finalization.
And if I could, Chair, I think that the legislature is working on that. Hopefully, they'll solve that problem before the end of the session, which will be the end of this month or beginning of May. So that, I agree with you. I think that it is a dangerous situation to have motorized vehicles onto sidewalks, and they should allow them onto bike paths or onto the street. And until they do that, it's going to be a tough thing. And whatever the next council does in terms of this afterwards, I think it would be proper to look at that safety issue. I apologize, Chair.
Okay. Yes.
Yes, I didn't support it to as a pilot program. And it isn't now.
Yes, sir.
So my vote's no.
Are you asking then for sep, I'm directing my question to Councilwoman Capeen. Are you then requesting a separate vote on 51, 52, and 53?
Please.
Because this is a consent docket.
Yes, it is. So yes, if that's what it takes, that's what I like.
If I could, then let me rescind my motion. Let me start again, and then we can go through it on an individual basis.
Thank you.
That's okay. I'd like to move items 47 and 48 and have 49 set for a continuance to April, April eight, excuse me, April 18.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from, amended motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Cohen. End of discussion of motion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And Chair, let me move items 50 through 53 with the substitute A, B, and C exhibits onto the resolutions 51, 52, and 53.
Second. Before we vote. I just want to say that I'm going to agree with Councilman Miranda. I support this as a pilot. I won't be here to make a final decision on whether or not it goes forward, but I would encourage everyone to scrutinize it closely when the time comes because it may, it may not work. We'll just have to see.
Right. All right. The motion was made by Mr. Suarez, second by.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Maniscalco, and for discussion of motion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Motion carried with Capeen voting no.
One of you, one of you to, Mr. Vera. I want to make a motion at this time to have Jean Duncan report back to council on, how much time have you got?
It would have to be the 18th.
18. All right, on the 18th.
Twenty-fifth, we've got a meeting.
Workshop.
A workshop.
On the 18th, to give us an update on all of the complaints from law enforcement that are taking place throughout the Northeast pertaining to motorcycles, these schoolers. There's been injuries, there's been abuse where people are leaving things out in open, people abusing their authority by riding them in places that they're not authorized to ride. And if you find in certain northeastern areas of this country, they're starting to ban these schoolers. And I know we got a one-year pilot program, but I would hope that she be able to research the problems that are taking place in these other parts of this country and be able to give us an update to see that we would do prevention measures to try to not allow this to occur here in the city of Tampa.
So I'll second that for April 18th under staff reports.
Right, under staff report.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Reddick, a second by Councilman Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We go to, 54, set for public hearing. Okay.
If I could, we have items 54 to 57, which are going to set for public hearings. All of them are on June 6, 2019, at 10:30 a.m. I'd like to move all of those.
No, 56 and 57 are not.
I'm sorry, 50.
455 to June 6 of 2019. I'd like to move those two items.
Got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. And on numbers 56 and 57, I'd like to move that for a public hearing on June 27 of 2019 at 10:30 a.m.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Moved up to.
30 public hearings.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Miranda. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. That's through 62.
Yeah. All those opposed? Most carried. All right, item number 58. Item number 58.
Take staff reports where you can get Mr. Weiss back.
Oh, okay.
66 through 68. Those three items there.
66. All right, before we go to the public hearing, second reading, we'll go to staff report, and we'll do item number 66. Item number 66.
That's Mr. Weiss, I believe. Eric, back there. These are the items that are over $1 million.
I think I'm 67.
You're going to have 66, 67, and 68, sir.
Don't worry.
You may stay there and not have any of them.
Eric Weiss, Waste Water Department Director, here to answer any questions on item 67.
We talking about 66.
66, 67, and 68 are ones that we opened up for you. Which one do you have?
66 is the $5 million you're proposing here.
I'm on 67.
All right. Anyone from staff here for item number 66?
All right, so we'll hold that, 67.
Here to answer any questions on this construction contract.
All right, any question from staff?
Move 67.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item number 68. Any question continue?
Move a two-week continuance on item number 68.
Okay, got a motion from Cohen, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That would be April 18.
Yes, that would be April 18.
Okay.
And as long as we're here.
I see Alex Weiss. 69.
All right, we go to item number 69.
Good morning, Council. Mark Wilbach, Director for the Department of Solid Waste and Environmental Program Management, was asked to appear to talk a little bit about our cart delivery services and maybe why we're working with a five to 10-day timeframe for delivery. Just wanted to let council know that we are aware of the delays that are taking place. It is our standard that we deliver containers within three to five days. We are working with our call centers right now to get that message out, so it's going to take us a while. I believe earlier last month, Brad Barrett and Eli Franco may have spoken with you about the launch of our new utility management system. Of course, with any system of that size, it's going to come with a few growing pains and whatnot. And what we've been able to discern as of recently is that some of our folks are still learning some of the features of the system. So for instance, if we had a work order to deliver a container at an address, some of our staff are still getting familiar with the codes in order to properly synchronize and distribute those work orders. So as we kind of, you know, again, get more accustomed to some of the new tools and features that we have, we'll continue planning our work accordingly. We are aware of the backlog. We plan on clearing our backlog up within the next two weeks, and we should be, everything should be back to normal. But I did want to let you know too, if any of your constituents have any problems with any of the services that we provide, just feel free to give us a call. You know, I'm just a phone caller waiting, so. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much. So you said that you're trying to get it to where it's a three to five day turnaround?
That's our goal, yes.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it. Because, you know, I've made some requests on behalf of some folks that I've asked, and it's taken, you know, 10, sometimes 15 days, and when trash piles up and, you know, with the heat and everything, it's not pleasant.
Absolutely.
But thank you for coming before us, and I'm glad to see that you guys are working to expedite that. You know, that's more of a reasonable timeframe.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other question from council?
I'll move to continue item number 70 to make second.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item number 71.
Oh, pardon me.
Oh, pardon me. Mike Chuckren, Contract Administration, here for item number sixty-six to answer any questions.
Well, you're going to have to wait, sir. We waited on you, now you got to wait on us.
Roger.
All right, seventy-one.
O.C.A., Wayne, Department of Logistics and Asset Management. And city staff was asked to report back on the sources of information used to determine the spore count standards and acceptable ranges for the mold or in City Hall. So I just wanted to give some information. The Facility Management Division uses the following agency's information in proceeding with air quality response. So for the information that we're providing to you, we use the National Center of Biotechnology Information, that's the N-C-B-I, the National Institutes of Health, the National Allergy Bureau, the American Industrial Hygiene Association, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the New York Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. So, and I just wanted, I think it's worth noting that the New York Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, that's the organization of the agency that sets the guidelines that are used both nationally and internationally for assessment and remediation of fungi in indoor environments. So we use all of those sources of information when we are assessing and making a determination of how we're going to assess buildings that have shown some particulate count. As airborne particulates are found everywhere, and I stressed this the last time I was here, the question regarding particulates is not, are there present in buildings in Florida? But rather, the question I think we all should be asking is, are there any particulates present in excessive amount that are likely to impact one's health or cause people with sensitivities to experience symptoms? So using the data provided by the agencies that I just mentioned, the Facility Management Division determined spore counts and utilized the most conservative ranges, and I'll talk about those ranges in a moment. And what we found in, in using the data and analyzing the information from the reports was that when analyzing all of the indoor air quality test results, each falls within the low range of the number of spores per cubic meter. Some of the common particulates found both inside and outside of the building were elevated on certain days, but they all, still all fell within that low range. Now, depending on an individual's tolerance or sensitivity, the, they can experience symptoms at any level of the ranges. The professional testing and analysis are determined by professionals coming in, visually inspecting the buildings, assessing occupants' symptoms, evaluating building performance, testing potential environmental sources, and applying professional analysis from experts in the field. Now, isolating the sources or the source has been somewhat difficult, as common particulates are found both outside and inside of buildings. Particulate levels fluctuate, and this could be caused or exacerbated by open windows. Both professional services industries, PSI, that's the company that we use to do the testing, and Facility Management Division have observed evidence of warping around the window seals, the baseboards, visual mold growth under window sealant in small areas around the same window seals with elevated moistures. We've also noted bubbling paint and spouting in the same areas. Now, there is no documentation or observations of widespread mold or moisture damage in the building, which will allow active mold growth in this building in Old City Hall. Occasionally, there have been documented elevated mold spores. PSI, the company who does the testing, attest that there is no active mold spore growth in this building. I think it's also worth noting that out of the seventy-five people who are in this building working in Old City Hall, only three employees requested to be moved due to sensitivities.
The rest have suffered.
Now, in terms of the ranges, the ranges are from, and I'm going to talk about the low, moderate, median, moderate, high, and very high. The count from zero to sixty-four, six thousand four hundred ninety-nine spores per cubic air, that's considered low. Sixty-five hundred to twelve nine nine nine, that's considered moderate. Thirteen thousand to forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine spores per cubic meter of air is considered high, and above fifty thousand, fifty thousand spores per cubic meter of air is considered very high. So I just wanted to provide you with that information that you requested for us to come back and share with you.
Okay, and pertaining to the windows, the only reason the windows were open was because there was mold. The windows opening didn't bring the mold in. The mold was already here when the windows were open in order to breathe.
Yes, ma'am.
And some people are sensitive, and they can be, and they can be affected at the low range, and only three people asked to be moved. But many of us suffered through it. And as a matter of fact, in twenty seventeen, there was a, a report where I am stating, just in passing, because I was tearing here on the dais, and I said, and I was coughing, and I said, "There's something in the air here that is making me cough and tear." So we were up here, and we were suffering through it. And to tell us that the windows opened brought the mold in is not correct. The windows opened because the mold was there, and we needed to breathe fresh air.
Yes, ma'am. If I may comment, so during the twenty seventeen timeframe is when we were doing the envelope renovation of the building. And after we completed that project, we had a period of time.
The point is, you all never considered, this administration never considered the health of the people that were staying here during that time at all. Did not move us out, did not do any, any of that. We lived through the mold and spores and whatever else, what else did you call them? What was the other technical name?
The airborne particulates.
Particulates, yeah. They were real particular, because they got in our throat, they got in our eyes, they got in our sinuses. And as a matter of fact, mold was removed from the walls in my legislative aide's office just recently. It actually, and there's mold in here now.
Yes, ma'am. In Florida, there is mold in the buildings, but according to the reports and the data, the mold that we have, or the particulates and spores that we have, is within the range. And as I mentioned, the sensitivity of the tolerance of a person will determine how well they're able to.
But nobody asked if you're sensitive. My legislative aide has asthma. Nobody said, "Look, if you have asthma, you may need to leave the building." Nobody bothered, nobody cared. Here's the other thing. When you stayed here, in particular, about the windows being closed, to me, that sends a message that because the windows were open, therefore the mold, the humidity came in, when it was the opposite of what actually happened. So that statement is leading at best.
Yes, ma'am. If I may comment to that, with the windows being open, it is challenging for us to even maintain, to even determine the sources, as well as maintain a constant humidity in the building.
I understand that, but the humidity was in the building before the windows opened, and the mold was in the building. And during, nobody bothered to ask, "What is your sensitive, sensitivity to this?" Because this may happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's whatever else you all may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. And Ms. Wayne, thanks for being here. You know, I'm looking at, right now, the limited mode remedial work plan that was provided by PSI.
Yes, ma'am.
This is dated December nineteenth of last year. And as part of their, their report, under page, it would be page three, under duct work, it does say, under here, "Due to the visible dust accumulation containing conidophores," and I don't know what that is, it's a type of fungus, I believe, "and fungal hyphal fragments." And it says, "Confirmed by tape lift analysis on the inside of the metal ductwork, it is recommended that the interior of the duct be either properly cleaned or removed and replaced." Now, the reason I mention this is that there are contaminants within the building that have nothing to do with some of the other issues that you mentioned concerning the opening of windows. And the reason why that is, is that they did what they call a tape lift test, meaning that that dust was accumulated, accumulated over that timeframe. In addition, the carpeting, and that's also on page three of the same report, it said, "The laboratory analysis from the carpet check samples," which is what they call dust bulk, whatever that is, "and on the second and sixth floors, the carpet on the second floor exhibits the presence of Stactoria spore and Chyotomium spore, fungal spores, which are not typically found outdoors, and are related to moisture-damaged building materials." Now, the reason I mention that, if they're not typically found outdoors, that means that they weren't brought in by someone's feet, you know, when they're walking in through the, through the offices and stuff. And one of the problems that I think we have here is that we have not done a good enough job in terms of our remediation concerning these issues. Now, they found it on the second and sixth floor. That means that it will spread throughout the rest of the building regardless of where it starts or where it is.
Yes.
So we probably needed to do, or will have to do, a floor-by-floor, you know, closing off in order to solve some of these problems, because we can't clean only one part of the building, or even one duct on one floor of the building, and not have some of the issues throughout, because it'll continue to pop up. At least that's my analysis based on the report. Secondly, on page five of the same report, it says, and this is under specific steps required include, and it's under step number two, "It is assumed that this project will be conducted in phases," what I was just talking about, "and therefore care should be exercised so as not to allow airflow from elevators, stairwells, or other floors to mix with the phased work area." Basically what I was just mentioning. Installation of critical barriers, barriers demarcating the work area shall be provided in order to prevent air exchange into the remaining spaces. I'm not sure that's been done, based on this report, because obviously, we've been working in the building still. There, you know, there's not been a close-off of the building, or a close-off in phases that I know of. You know, whether it's done in the upper floors, I don't know, and that's not my question, which is, you know, if we're going to do it, it says, "Critical barriers should be installed around any areas not fully contained, i.e. chases, locations where pipe and/or ducts pass through, plenum from the deck to associated walls, etc." Now, the reason I mention all this is that it sounds to me, based on some of the things that Ms. Capeen has mentioned, a lot of anecdotal evidence based on her aide and her office, I mean, and then I think we mentioned last time, that Mr. Vieira's office was flooded at one point, and there was no window that was open. That was coming from another source, we don't know. I don't know what ever happened with that. And so that can cause, later on, mold and other issues, and we don't want that to happen, because once the mold starts, it's self-contained, and it grows based on the fact that something has already happened. Now, my suggestion is, because of the type of molds and fungal material that might be present in the building, we do have to go through a phased process in order to remove each one of those at some point. Now, we need to maybe look back at when we did the construction on the building itself and the ceiling of the building, whether or not it was properly done by the contractor to make sure that we did not have these in here. I think that we can all agree that there are these fungal, based on the report, based on the anecdotal evidence, that all these things exist. They're here, and even if the levels are not as high based on what your report was, we still have to figure out, because we will have some workers in here, new workers, you know, myself and Mr. Cohen and Ms. Capeen and Mr. Reddick are all going to be gone, and they're going, the new people are going to bring in new aides. We don't know if they have any issues concerning asthma or any other, you know, respiratory issue. We have to make sure that when people come in here, I mean, there's a gentleman that's sitting in our audience now that has a medical issue, and he has a mask on right now. Okay? Now, he has a mask on because he can't be around a lot of other folks, but having a place that might have more of these fungal spores in here makes it even more dangerous for him than it does for other people. So we have, we can't have a level of acceptability. We have to have a better cleaning and a better analysis based on what we've already done. And I don't think that we've done that yet. Now, I'm not asking you right now to commit to doing that, but I do think that it is incumbent upon the administration that they do a much better job of making sure that these do not exist, that we get rid of any existing mold currently, that we look for, and based on the report that we've already commissioned, and that we already have in hand, act on these remedial issues, and make sure that we clean it out once and for all. And that, I think, needs to be done. And if you don't have a contract pending in order to do that, I would suggest that you go to the administration and tell them that we should be doing this on a floor-by-floor basis to close off pieces of the building. We were out of the building for how long? A year and a half? Not a year and a half, about a year? Almost a year? Nine months? Something like that.
We never left the building. We were downstairs.
When we were, well, when we were out of the building, though, too, we had some availability of some office space outside the building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
So, but we were, we were out for a while. We need to make sure that we do a better job of making sure this is clean. Now, whether or not we have to go back to the original contractor that sealed the building, because of what we're seeing across the street in terms of the constant pounding of this building, it may be causing more issues, something that Mr. Miranda had brought up, before we pass that particular, that particular resolution concerning that building. I think that we really need to look at this in a much more coherent way, because I don't think that we're doing enough in order to make sure that we cleanse this building, exercise all these fungal spores that are existing here.
If I may respond, sir?
I don't think that that's necessary for a response. I wasn't asking you a question. I think that you need to go back to the administration, and this is just a statement to you, and I think this is a better, a better way for you to handle this, as opposed to answering for something that's in the report. I think that you need to find a way of cleansing this building, and not come back with some more things of what is acceptable or not acceptable. I think that you, it is incumbent on you and the administration, based on your, your position in terms of facilities management, to make sure that this building is not a sick building.
Yes, ma'am.
We have seen this in other locations and municipalities, and it can cost us millions of dollars, and it can cause worker comp claims and other issues. And I think that coming back here to just explain that it's acceptable is not acceptable to me.
Right.
And I assume it's not acceptable to other members of this board.
Well, that's part of the plan. That's what I was going to say. That's part of the plan for the next phase, and to use the steps that have been outlined in those, closing off the floors, that's part of the plan to do that.
When you say plan, that means that we, you are going to institute something where this building will be closed off different floors.
Yes, sir.
As you clean it. Do you know when that's going to be coming back to us?
That's, I'm going to have Mike Chuckren.
Okay.
To speak on that, but that was part of the whole timeline that we reported the last time that we were here.
Okay.
To do that whole, that, that is part of the whole approach.
Right.
So Mike, I don't know if he's still here or not, but, oh.
If Mike has it, I don't know.
Yes.
And Mike, I guess you answer specifically to the timeline, if you could, based on what we were just talking.
Okay, the, the project that O.C.A. was just speaking of, the request for qualifications has already been sent out. That's already out?
State your name, please.
Oh, sorry. Mike Chuckren, Contract Administration Department. So the request for qualifications to get a contractor on board to do the HVAC work and electrical work and other interior work inside this building is already out. The qualifications are due at the end of April. We'll have presentations in June. The mayor will make a selection also in June, and we expect to have design beginning in September of two thousand and nineteen. We expect a design to be about a seven-month timeframe to do the design, and then the work is expected to be about a one-year construction performance period.
Okay, so let me ask you, Michael, in terms of the specifics concerning the, the spores and the fungal material that is in here, obviously, you're going to have a, you know, a contractor come in that's HCVA. Is he also specifically looking at these particular issues? Because we have to make sure that when we do the work, we're not causing more problems by changing that, the air system. And again, if you're replacing the ducts, that's great, because that means something. But are we going to be able to seal this off as much as possible, to do as best of a job possible, based on the recommendations from the, from the mediation report, remediation report, so that we don't have these issues going forward? We have an old- We have an old building that we spent a lot of money to refurbish, and we want to make sure that the people that work in this building and visit this building aren't going to be exposed to this type of stuff. Is there, is there part of that RFP, something concerning this specifically?
The, when, when the, the firm is selected, they will be given this report. That's going to be part of the consideration to take care of and remediate that in this building.
So, is that, but again, is it part of the RFP to talk about this particular issue? Because I think that might be something very important.
No, sir. What we do is, it's a RFQ, actually. It's only qualification based, so we're not giving them proposals to do, provide us any work that they will be doing. It's just looking at their qualifications to select the best firm available.
I, I would make a suggestion to you, because I can't tell you what to do in that way, but, and I won't be around to either vote up or down on a particular contract, but I would suggest that you include these issues that were part of our report, that we've already commissioned, that we already have in hand, to make sure that whoever is qualified to do the duct work also is qualified to make sure that they're not part of any issues concerning these spores or anything else. And I don't know if there is anyone out there that's qualified to do it, but I'm saying that that's something that we should definitely look at, and it should be part of our process. And I, I don't know if it's too late to do that process. If it's an RFQ, I think that you can allow, after, after presentation of the qualifications, you could probably insert that afterwards. I don't know, I don't know your job as much as I know mine, so I'm just asking that that be put part of it if you could.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Chair, for the indulgence.
Just a quick question. For those who may have documented specified instances of, of diagnosis of, of conditions like allergies or asthma, is there going to be accommodation made for them to be able to, you know, work from a different office or, for those with those documented medical diagnoses?
Yes, sir. So, for the people who've been moved out of the building already, they approached us with their medical or sensitive, medical concerns or sensitivities, and we have provided alternate locations for them to work, so yes.
Okay, so that continues to be available?
That is, yes. It always has been and will continue to be available.
Thank you.
Yes, here's more anecdotal since I'm on that roll. What happened here is that we didn't know all this was going on, and people that had allergies and asthma thought that they were having issues for other reasons because we were never told that these mold spores were going around, never. So, when you say they request to leave, they didn't know they had to request to leave, they weren't, they didn't know what was going on.
Yes, ma'am.
So, there was never a memo going out, "Look, if you have allergies or asthma, this may affect you." That did not go around, did it?
No, ma'am, that did not go around.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask just one follow-up question. How often is this building inspected for moles and leaks and utter corrosion that might take place in a building of this age?
So, we do that quarterly, and we also quarterly clean the air ducts to ensure that there's no mold. We clean the carpet with the HEPA-type cleaning to, for anything particular matter that, matter that may be in the carpets as well, so that's done quarterly.
The entire building?
Yes, sir.
Floor to floor?
Yes.
Okay. I'm wondering why my age was suffering so bad with allergy.
Yes, sir.
In, in the office. And so, and when you, if you find something particularly out of place, say on the third floor, fifth floor, what is the remediation for that?
If you don't mind, sir, I want to ask what is out of place, which specifically?
Well, if you find some fungus or something.
So, if we find, if we find fungus or anything, then we'll bring our inspection company come in to inspect to see again what, what is it and to help identify the source of whatever it is that they find.
Do you eradicate it?
Oh, yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
We, we don't just leave it there if, if something is found.
Okay. Well, you got to keep in mind, you know, they call this the old city hall building, so that means this building is old. Okay? And therefore, there's got to be, I agree with Mr. Suarez, there's got to be a better preventive mechanism put in place to, in order to preserve this building because too many people are getting sick. Whether they reporting it, taking days off, well, people are getting sick and, and, and we got to do a better job in that. So, I, I just wanted to ask you a question. Any other comments or questions from council? All right, anything else from, from you?
No, sir, that's, that's it.
All right, we thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we go back to item sixty-six.
Mike Chuckren, Contract Administration Department, here to answer any questions you have on item sixty-six.
All right, any questions from council pertaining to item sixty-six?
Another resolution.
All right, I got a motion from Mr. Maran, from Mr. Maniscalco, saying, but, Mr. Cohen, I want to pay that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Capeen, go to the pool, item, item number thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Do we have anyone here from staff to talk to us about this, this sale?
McDonald, I hear.
Oh, thank you.
Good morning, Bob McDonough, Economic Development. Do you have a specific question? Yeah. This land, this land was bought in the 1950s for the use as a wellfield by the city of Tampa. Subsequently, it was found not to have sufficient water resources for that use. It was laying fallow for almost 60 years. The, currently, the only use for that property is by the police department, who has a stable there. So, we have looked at selling it as a surplus property, and we have found a partner and a use that we feel is, is very commendable. You know, we talk about reducing our use and reliance upon carbon-based electricity, and we are working with the Tampa Electric Company to have this converted into a solar field. So, they will be doing a due diligence period of six months, which they have the opportunity to extend for a few periods, to use it as a solar field.
Is that part of the contract?
Yes.
That it be used as a solar field?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Miranda?
Thank you very much. In fact, if it wasn't for the Tampa Bay Times, I would have never known about the sale until I got here. I was never advised of anything. I was never advised, and I don't take it as anything, you know how I am. But I read it in the paper, and I said, gee, like you just said, Mr. McDonough, I know sometime back, it was looked at as a wellfield possibility, and, and then it was, it was drained out a lot by the, well, we had the droughts, and the farmers used a lot of that water to water the fields, and I understand that. And now the yield of it, it went from about sixteen or ten million gallons a day to about one billion gallon a day, which is unfeasible to spend that type of money to get one billion gallons of water a day. However, my mind keeps wondering as to why I never knew, and I'm not saying anything as to why, I don't know. Did you approach somebody or somebody approached you, or was this, you met for coffee? I don't know. Was this advertised? I don't know. I'm trying to, to make sure that I do everything that the public's entitled to know. And I'm not casting any dark spots, and they're not. Certainly the purchaser is a very reputable company, very nice company, does a very charitable organization thing for the city and the surrounding area. But when you look at 450 acres, there's not too many individuals or companies that own 450 acres at any spot in Hillsborough County. And it's admirable that it's for that cost, there's nothing wrong with that. In fact, it's a plus. But when I look at these things and I tell myself, how did this happen? Why is it happening in April in the end of some term? Everybody's term. And I question that in my own mind, and I come up with no answers. Is it a gift? No. But I don't know the value of land at 450 acres of one slot of land where it doesn't have to be piecemealed together to form a 450-acre plot. So, therefore, I'm asking, does anybody know what I'm saying or does anyone even understand what I'm saying? Because I speak sometimes in a lot of riddles to find out what the other side knows.
Outside of agricultural uses, you're correct. There are such, not a whole lot of parcels that are larger. There have been accumulations which are ranches and agricultural uses. We did have this appraised, we had two different appraisals, one was $6 million and one was $12 million. The $12 million appraisal opined that it would be used for residential development. The county has determined that they are not extending their urban service district, which residential would be dependent on. So, there would be no water, no sewer. People would end up having to use SIS pools, which developers or home builders right now are unwilling to look at that as a potential. So, that negatively affects the, the value of it. There's also a certain amount of this property which are depicted as wetlands, depending on what time of year it is, which is why there's that variance in the value and the cost. Because what we will do as part of this process is have a wetlands delineation. There's a different value for uplands than there is for wetlands. And so, we interviewed brokers and provided the appraisals that we had and dealt with brokers that had experience in doing this type of thing. We selected Eschenbahn Company and went out, and they went out and solicited offers for it, and TECO, being the fact that it was a solar field, was the most attractive to us.
Now, let me go further, and I'm not, this is not about, what I'm saying, not about TECO and the city, just the way I think.
Yes, sir.
So, now, we, we having rising tides, I don't know if that land has any value to have water pumped. When the enable is going to happen, it will happen, to an area of that size. Years back, twenty-some years ago, there was a study done in cursory, not the whole complete study, I don't want to mislead anyone, about solving the drainage problems of South Tampa. And at that time, it was one and a half billion dollars, twenty-some years ago.
Right.
And that's one of the reasons I did not support, not that I was not willing to do something for the good people anywhere in the city, but I did not support the stormwater feed because of 251 billion expended, plus the interest, which is half a billion, it would never solve the drainage problem of South Tampa. It would solve the daily rains of South Tampa, three or four times a year, two or three inches. But if something great, greater than what we've seen in a regular little afternoon storm comes by, the proppantness of water coming down would come back where it came from because all we've done is changed the size of the volume of a pipe. And if we had a place where we could dump the water somewhere else, that's what the plan was twenty-some years ago, but the cost was prohibited. And I'm not saying that this is the place, I'm just saying, what happens if you sell it and then you have to do what I just said? Where do we go then? And what happens to the, the horse patrol at, of the police station? That's not been mentioned.
Two answers. First of all, we're looking for an alternative location. We have plenty of time to do that for the horses. Secondly, this piece of dirt is 15 miles, is the crow flies from downtown Tampa. We want to talk about exhibit, exorbitant costs to pump water that distance, especially the fact that it's probably 15 feet higher than the area that you're talking about. So, you, you're talking about a project that would be akin to something like New Orleans does with their dikes and pumps. It, it is not a financially feasible property to do that with, sir.
Well, I'm glad you said that because the cost there was one and a half billion without the interest. So, now it'd be two and a half billion without the interest, but that's the only way to solve a problem. And that also was twenty-some miles heading straight north. So, because this, this was never discussed at the meeting that I sat in for some period of time.
Yes, sir.
But then we have no plan then for that coming that I know of. You may know, but I don't. And you're going to have to buy a piece of property or lease a piece of property for the horses. And there's not enough room in there to keep the horses there?
Oh, we haven't discussed that with TECO. There are a couple of properties around that have stables that we're having initial conversations with about putting the horses there.
Well, I would like this one.
Yes, sir.
That we have a complete sale. I'm not against the sale.
Right.
I just never knew about it until I read in the newspaper. The horse is now coming to effect. The water situation is never going to be solved unless you have massive pipes and massive equipment, electrical equipment to pump it north or east, or you can't pump west, let's face it, you can only go east or north. You can't go south, and you can't go west. So, I'd like to know more about the future of the city before I am comfortable in making a deal. And I'm not saying it's a bad deal. I'm just saying that I am not prepared, as one, to understand what are we doing with the horses? There's no plan to move them. What is the cost there at one time? And I voted against something else that I started, the health clinics. It was one of my ideas, and I voted against it because one of them is in Brandon, and the city of Tampa doesn't have anything in Brandon. So, I'm just frustrating myself, I'm venting, and it's not you, sir. I like you even though, you know, sometimes you look like that movie actor, Dracula. But anyway, I want to give you a compliment. I, I know I'm good enough to talk that way, but what I'm saying is, see, I have no anger. I, I just want to find out what the hell's going on.
You look like Dracula, but I have no anger.
Flattery will get you nothing from them.
Now, that'll make the headline tomorrow news, Charlie calls it Dracula. And I'm not even mad.
Really?
Chair, Chair, right, good. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question. Thank you for all that information, but why couldn't we lease this property to TECO for them to, because you said it's a project for a year or two, they're going to see if it works? Is that what I understood you said?
They have to do engineering studies to see exactly the quality of the soils, the, how much wetland is in there.
Okay, they're going to buy it without doing the engineering studies?
No. That's why they have a due diligence period. They have six months, which can be extended, to do due diligence, to map out the wetlands, do soil testing, and other engineering studies on the land.
Again, why are we selling it? Why not lease it to them? Once they do their engineering and they decide, yes, this can work, why are we selling it? That part kind of perplexed me.
That was, that was what was proposed to us for the use of the land.
Who was, who proposed it?
TECO did it as a purchase. We did not approach them as a land lease.
But wait a minute, first you put it out for a purchase.
Can I explain something? This land has been sitting fallow.
Excuse me?
Excuse me for interrupting.
The, first you said you put, you found a broker to put it out to find buyers.
Right.
So, TECO didn't approach us to buy it, it was, it was already up for sale.
We approached people to see if anybody was interested in the property, and we received an offer to purchase from TECO. That, that would be an accurate statement.
Okay. Again, I don't, I have a hard time with selling the property as opposed to leasing it to them and with it for a certain amount of time, and if the, the farm works, then that would be great, and maybe at that point, there could be a sale, but I think this is an incomplete, incomplete plan. Thank you.
Mr. Suarez? Thank you, Chair. A couple of questions. I think that, you know, we have at least two people that are uncomfortable with this. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit more comfortable, but not quite all the way there, but in terms of, based on the numbers that are part of this project, meaning about nineteen point five, nineteen five for, I think it was.
Uplands.
Uplands, and then 10,000 for wetlands, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
What's the lowest that we could probably get and the highest we can get? I think we're between, what, six and a half to about 8.7 or something like that?
The estimate is somewhere less than 100 acres of weather, which will be delineated.
All right, so we're looking at more like seven and a half million dollars that we're going to receive?
That's correct.
Is this, and again, this is after the six-month, you know.
Due diligence.
Due diligence, meaning that we won't see money until after that due diligence is done and TECO agrees to finalize the deal, correct?
Correct.
All right. In terms of, in terms of some of the dollars that we're looking at, are any of those going to go towards something specific to pay a bond or anything like that?
No, sir.
The reason I ask is because we sold a piece of property across the street, and if I recall correctly, based on that deal, part of that went to paying off a bond, I think about 1.5 million or something like that. And that was a plan, that was part of the plan that was, you know, and it was public and it wasn't, you know, anything. I just want to make sure if there was anything, because it goes back to some of the timeframe that was talked about, are we looking at paying off a bond or doing anything else specifically because?
There is not encumbrance on this property.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to find out about.
Correct.
So, you know, I think that my colleagues, especially Mr. Miranda, who's going to be here and I'm not, if he doesn't feel comfortable with it, I think we probably should pull here, and I'm not, if he doesn't feel comfortable with it, I think we probably should pull this and maybe come back. And Mr. Miranda, I don't know if you were going to make a motion, or you think that I should to come back?
It's not that I'm uncomfortable, I'm not uncomfortable, I don't, I shouldn't be able to read it just off the newspaper.
Right. Well, I, I think that if I could, Mr. Miranda, because we have at least one more workshop before we leave as a council, meaning us, not you, you're going to still, you're going to still be here. But then again, we already knew that. Talk about Dracula, I mean, you're still here.
They did us a compliment.
Yeah, I hope you do. Maybe we should come back as a workshop to talk about this particular issue. I don't know if you feel that that's proper for you.
I don't.
I feel, I'm a little bit uncomfortable because.
I've never asked any council member to do anything.
No, 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 but I, I.
I just don't do that. I, I, if the council feels, I'm fine with it.
I agree, but I, I'm, I'm trying to put it into perspective because I'm not going to be here to have a final discussion on it. And if you feel strongly about it, I don't think we should move forward, because I think we need to come up with some kind of resolution in your mind.
I won't be here either, and I feel strongly.
Yeah, there you go. I mean.
Mr. Torito appears.
Yeah, Salto, the legal department. It has nothing to do with, with your discussion, but the legislature has a bill pending that basically says you can't sell city property that's located in someone else's jurisdiction without their permission. So if this thing gets dragged out, and again, it's your decision, that may be an issue that we won't be able to get rid of this property, even if we wanted to in some states. By doing the contract today, they can impair that contract, so it'll be a done deal. It'll, that's all I'm trying to say. It's nothing to do with your discussion, it's more dealing with a legal issue.
So the, so you're saying that the county could stop us from selling the property, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
So that's where the catalyst is at in terms of trying to sell it? I mean, the timeframe, or?
That may be part of the catalyst for it, but I'm just simply saying, that's come up, and it's an issue that you should be aware of. What decision you make is yours, but that is one more issue you may want to deal with.
Okay.
I just want to know furthermore what the cost is going to be. It's not a small cost. I don't know how many horses we have now, I don't know how much land they need, each horse needs about an acre to roam on, I don't know how many we have, and I don't know what that cost is going to be. So that cost of relocating that operation of the horse patrol and the amenities that go with it, I, I don't know what those costs are. So I got to know what the costs are to relocate and to repurchase yours. You're not more than likely going to find a beautiful barn built for your horses to come right in. It's very hard to find that. So I just don't know all that, that's what I'm saying.
I can come back with that information for you, sir.
Yeah, what I was going to suggest after listening to everyone is, I don't think we need a workshop on this, but maybe we can continue at two weeks to the eighteenth. Council members can get more information in that period. If, if they become more comfortable, great. If they don't become more comfortable, that's fine, we could, they can, we can vote it down, up, whatever. But it'll give an opportunity for people to at least get their questions answered, and it sounds like we could wrap it up before the period that Mr. Torito was alluding to would kick in.
And I'm all for solar, and I'm all for helping anybody get solar.
I'm more than happy to do that.
So I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
I want to add, I'm all for solar also. I just want to protect the taxpayers.
In that spirit, I'd like to make a motion to just continue this to April eighteenth under staff reports, and we can go from there.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Corn, second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion of motion? All who have voted in motion say aye.
Aye.
And close?
Thank you.
And I apologize if I offended anybody with the name of Dracula.
Look at his face, it's red.
Good morning, Council, Kristin Moore, Legal Department. There was memorandum asking, since we have an interpreter present for item number sixty five, if you could hear that as close to the ten thirty timeframe as possible, I just bring that up so that council is aware that the interpreter is here and we are prepared to proceed on item number sixty five.
Item number sixty five.
Chair, I'd like to, I'd like to open up, I'd like to move.
Before we do that, we still got one item that been pulled, so we need to go back to item number six.
That's right.
Before we go to sixty five. All right, item number six. Anybody from staff here pertaining to item number six? Well, y'all just lost, y'all just lost, renew that contract.
You know, excuse me, can I say something, Chair? May I say something? You know, this, my pulling number thirty nine was something that came up this morning. Number six was a memo. There was somebody here to speak on thirty nine, but there was, there's no one to speak on six, and that was a memo that was brought forth days ago?
Yesterday.
I find that disturbing.
All right.
Here we go.
You here for item number six?
Yes, sir, Greg Spearman, Person Director, Person Department.
Okay.
This is an item that we have on council for approval of the red light camera contract, and if you have any questions, to the best of my bill, I'd be able to answer those, but TPD is supposed to also be here as well.
All right, well, hate to put you on the spot, but I got several questions I want to raise, and if you cannot answer, then hopefully that TPD is watching us, get, they'll get somebody over here who will answer the question. First, is this, this contract is on a calendar or fiscal year?
This contract is going to, not on the fiscal year, it's going to be from the time it's awarded. So if the council awards it today, votes it up today, it will be for a five-year term.
Five years?
Correct.
And this with the same company that we have dealt with in the past?
Yes, it is. We did do a competitive request proposal process, and the incumbent company was the one who actually came back and won the proposal.
How much the contract for?
It's difficult to say, Council, Reddick, what the contract is, because there, there's a fee that's involved in terms of what the red light camera cost is. The city gets a portion of that, and then, of course, if there are any costs of the city, it has to come out of what the city would make in terms of costs over and above what the cost of the cameras would be. If the fee, if the cost, if the fee happens to be less than what we make, then the city doesn't know anything at all in the contract. So it's a cost neutral contract to the city.
The contract that you have currently in place that requesting our approval today, the benefit cost to the city would be how much of that contract?
I don't have any details on the cost, Councilman Reddick, but it is cost neutral to the city. It does not cost the city anything at all. If we have revenues that are less than what the camera costs are, if we have revenues above that, then there is a cost, we actually pay for the cost of the cameras.
All right, we, we share revenues from, from this contract with the city, county, is it cities and state?
It actually is a, if I could just share with you what the state statutes read very briefly. The actual camera fee is a hundred and fifty-eight dollars, but there is a breakout of the fees in terms of who gets what. The city's portion of that hundred and fifty-eight dollar fee is actually seventy-five dollars. And then the remainder of that actually goes to various other entities throughout the state.
Okay.
And basically, if I could just share with you very quickly, so a hundred and fifty-eight dollars for violation when a driver fails to stop at a traffic signal, if enforced by a county or a municipality, seventy dollars will be remitted to the county or municipality to the Department of Revenue for depositing to the General Revenue Fund. Ten dollars shall be remitted to the Department of Revenue for depositing to the Department of Health, and three dollars will be remitted to the Department of Revenue deposit, depositing to the brain and spinal cord injury. The balance of that is seventy-five dollars, which actually remains with the entity.
Okay, so the entity gets seventy-five dollars?
The city would actually get seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollars?
That is correct.
Okay, how much did the, the company, American Traffic Solution, how much they receive? What their percentage?
Okay, if the fines, if the city actually has excess funds, then we would actually pay the camera company out of that. If the fines come in below what the camera costs would be, then there's no cost to the city. And I don't have those details, but that is the way the, the form it works for this particular contract.
You, you might not have this information handy, but do you recall in two thousand and seventeen, how much American Traffic Solution received?
I, I do not have those figures on Council Reddick.
Is it more than what the city received?
Is it, I'm pardoned?
Is it, does it exceed what the city received portion?
We, we don't pay the camera company any fees at all, if in fact, we have revenues less than what the camera costs are.
All right, and next question, you probably won't be able to answer, because as we're dealing with law enforcement, but I'm going to ask it anyway. When a person appeal, one of those citation, I think we have a court or something that they, they go to, they come here for the court, is that, is correct?
They can appeal a ticket, there's a process in place for that. Again, I'm not familiar with that.
You're not familiar?
That's something the TPD handles, but there is an appeals process, and I think our city attorney can address that.
Salto, legal department, there's a hearing here on Fridays, and they come and appeal those two. A police officer sitting here, and it is appealed to them if they have an appeal, and the decision is made whether they pay the ticket or not.
Do, do we know, or do you know how many people, what the total number of people appealed their citation in two thousand and eighteen?
I do not.
What about two thousand and seventeen?
I have no, no figures at all on that, sir, I'm sorry.
Damn, ain't nobody here prepared for no answers? I mean, this, this is, this is ridiculous here. We, we can't get these questions answered. Ms. Little, I'm going to try you. Do you have any information pertaining to what American Traffic Solution received as part of their revenue from this contract, and the city portion as a part of the city of share of the contract? Do you have any information for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
The city, we, we control records of all monies received in total, and then we obviously report the expenses that are paid out to the, to the vendor, and then we report net revenues on a fiscal basis, so I can give you those figures, Chairman, for two thousand and seventeen, you indicated.
Okay, yes.
FY two thousand and seventeen, our reported and audited numbers for revenues was five million, seventy-seven thousand dollars, seventy-seven thousand, fifty-two dollars. The expenses in that fiscal year paid to ATS was two million, two fifty-seven, one thirty-two, for net revenue to the city of Tampa of two million, eight hundred, nineteen thousand, nine hundred, twenty dollars. Of that net revenue figure for the intersection safety camera, safety program, seven hundred, four thousand, nine hundred, eighty dollars, that's the twenty-five percent. And then the same figures for FY eighteen, revenues, five million, six eighteen, seven four nine. Expenses, two million, three thirty-two, two fifty-one. Net revenues, three million, two eighty-six, four ninety-eight, with a contribution to the intersection safety program of eight hundred, twenty-one thousand, six hundred, twenty-five dollars.
So the city paid the cost for any expenses that may, might incur with the cameras?
Pursuant to the contract, and I believe Mr., that Mr. Spearman was giving you the terms of the contract.
Okay, well, Spearman, you come back up, and I just want to be clear, the city is paying for all the expenses that incur with the cameras?
That only happens, Councilman Reddick, as was Little indicated. If there is a certain amount of money that we make over and above what the cost of the cameras would be, then we would pay the firm for the cost of the cameras. If what the revenue is, is less than the cost of the cameras, it's neutral to the city and we pay nothing.
Okay, what was it, oh, well, let me, let me stick to your, your job, because I was about to ask a financial question there. Two thousand and seventeen, what was the total expenditure paid out? Could you repeat that again?
In two thousand and seventeen, it was two million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, one thirty-two.
Uh, two thousand and eighteen, do you have those figures? That was in seventeen what you just gave, right?
Yes.
Do you have those figures for eighteen yet?
For expenses for eighteen, yes, sir, and these figures are audited.
Okay.
And the figure is for eighteen, for the expenses paid out was two million, three hundred thirty-two thousand, two fifty-one.
Okay. All right, let me wrap up by asking just a couple more questions, because a lot of my questions dealt with law enforcement being here. I don't know, I'm going to still keep going back to his seat. Sir, you back up again. You say this, this been a rebid, new contract for five years?
Correct.
Do, do, what is the termination clause in the contract?
The termination clause, clause basically is a, includes a penalty to the city on a per approach or per intersection basis. The city should terminate the contract prior to that five-year term. And that would be not for existing camera installs, but for new camera installs.
Okay.
And so that, that, I believe is about fifteen hundred dollars per approach, so it would be for all the new installations, not for the ones that are already in existence today.
I, you might not be able to answer this, but how many cameras do we have out in the city, a part of this contract?
I am not certain to that number. We do have ATS here this morning, and they could probably answer some of those questions.
Oh, they're here?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, but yeah, get them up here.
Jason Norton.
David Mast.
How many cameras will, 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 will be hanging in, in this city?
We have fifty-four cameras currently operating in the city of Tampa.
Fifty-four. What are the top, top five locations where they're, they're hanging?
It's an excellent question that I'm sure TPD has an immediate answer to. I will tell you that where we are located in Tampa was based on Tampa TPD's opinion of where the intersections that were needed to be addressed. And over that period of time, those intersections where we have a system, we've seen a twenty-two percent reduction in accidents at those intersections since you all have had a system.
What are the top five location with the most citation?
We can pull that report, we, we provide it to TPD, and they can pull it up at any time. We can get it off, just off the computer.
So you guys came here basically just to see if we're going to say yes, and y'all can go back, right?
No, sir, we are happy to answer any of sort of the mechanics of the proposal that's in front of you. So a good example of that would be that currently your sort of aggregate rate per approach is about thirty-nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, which was a reduction from your previous term. Under this new agreement, we're proposing a significant upgrade in technology at every location, and reducing the rate by over ten percent to thirty-six hundred dollars. Another important feature of this proposal is that we are offering the city of Tampa five hundred and forty thousand dollar credit for a technology known as automatic license plate reader. You may remember the use of that in your serial killer investigation that you had last year, and how critical it proved to know where that vehicle was moving within the city to identify the serial killer. We actually loaned you all a trailer during that time, which helped to create your geofence, and we did that at no additional expense, we just saw a need from a client and wanted to, to help. And so one of what we thought was the important features of this agreement was that we not only would be your red light camera vendor going forward, but we will also be an investigative, better investigative tool than we have been in the past, with real-time information feeding into your real-time crime center to help you all be a safer community.
Well, let me ask you one last question then. I see TPD just walked in, and I'm pretty sure they, he got the report, and what I would yield to my colleagues, and then I would raise some questions with TPD. What is the advantage to your company to have this contract with the city of Tampa?
So I'm sure, I know you understand, Councilman Reddick, the structure of this agreement. The city is out no money for all of the infrastructure that is in place within the city of Tampa. We absorb all of the capital outlay to put this system into your community to make you safer. And then we have agreed in the past that we get paid back over time. In Florida, it has to be a fixed fee, so you cannot revenue share in Florida. So that is why it's the thirty-six hundred dollar figure. It's not necessarily true in other states, but in Florida, that's, that's the way the contract has to be structured. And so the thirty-six hundred is based on the five-year agreement, and frankly, why we were able to give you a lower price based on the term. So our, our benefit is thirty-six hundred times fifty-four, which comes out, as, as she said, to about two point three million. Your benefit from that perspective is close to three million dollars a year in additional revenue that the city wouldn't see if that system was not there. Another important thing that you may not be aware of is that, as you know, Tampa General is a level-one trauma center. Part of this program helps fund that level-one trauma center. Part of this program helps fund that Level One Trauma Center at Tampa General. So over the last seven, eight years, Tampa General has seen almost a million dollars in funding to the trauma center from the red light camera program based on the, based on the way that the revenue is shared of that other amount that the city does not see.
Okay, and, and I appreciate what you're saying about the trauma center. But I'm going to show you how that seven million dollars can also be better used based on the data that I'm gonna get from the police department.
Okay.
Because I'm glad you mentioned that, because basically what you said is a disservice to this community. And, and, but I'm gonna yield to Mr. Miranda.
No, I, I reserve my time.
Okay, Ms. Kapine?
I'll reserve my time.
All right. All right, then we'll call TPD up.
Great, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Bill. I, I just wanted to hand it to Council, my office printed out, I'd requested my aide to do this, the areas from the city of Tampa website where the red cameras are at, in case if anybody wants this, just for anybody that has all the locations.
Okay, TPD?
Morning, Council.
I guess the first question would be, where are the, the, the top five citations areas in the city of Tampa where the cameras are located? The top five.
I, sir, there was a miscommunication on the presenting of this discussion, so I don't have that data. I'll have to bring that data back to you, I have some more general data, I don't have the specific breakdown of the intersections.
Okay. Do you know whether anyone go to this appeal court? Law enforcement, did it be present at the appeal court? That's what it called, appeal court?
Yeah, yeah, well, it's a hearing master.
A hearing master, yeah, yeah. Law enforcement present at that?
I did not, we have our specialist as Lieutenant Mesmer on that. I would have to get with him to see if he attended that.
Okay. Are you aware of how many of those who appear before that court? How many citations been overturned by the hearing master?
No, I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, do you know, do you have a total of how many citations been issued on Twenty-Something Hillsborough Avenue?
I have total for the city, but not for breakdown by intersection.
Okay. How many in 2017 in the city?
All right, so for 2017, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven red light camera tickets were issued, and we reviewed a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and eleven.
Can you say that, I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Sure. In 2017, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven red light camera tickets were issued, and a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and eleven reviews were conducted. So basically, that meant we had a hundred and twenty thousand reviews, a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and eleven reviews that came to a police officer review. Out of that review, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven will move forward.
Seventy-nine thousand.
So, so what, can I just, so what you're saying is, you're, you're talking about how many are thrown out before the person even gets a citation?
The hundred and twenty thousand, correct. Actually, this is at the officer level, so for example, some of them are even thrown out by ATS before they even get to us. So let's take a right turn, for example. Somebody makes a right turn on red, it doesn't even get to us unless they go over eighteen miles an hour. After eighteen miles an hour, it comes to us for review, then we may or may not send it forward for a ticket. So it's going through several filter processes.
So, but I think the question that was asked was, okay, so then you've got a bunch that have been thrown out before the person gets them, how many of the people that get them actually come in and contest them? I think that was what we, what we were.
That, I do not have that.
You don't know? Okay, sorry.
Mr. Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I got a question. If you, I don't know this, if you contest a red light camera ticket and you do not prevail in court, do you have to pay court costs and additional fines, or?
What I can tell you is you have sixty days to pay the administrative fine of a hundred and fifty-eight dollars. If you don't do that, you don't ask for an extension, then it will go to a regular uniform traffic citation of two hundred and sixty-one, and then you would have the same procedures that you would have in court as with any other ticket.
Okay, thank you for that. And are there any, lack of use of a better term, payment options, payment plans? I mean, because there's a lot of people for whom a hundred and fifty-eight dollars is a bridge too far. Are there any known, you know, payment options?
Well, I can't tell you any specific citations on that. I can tell you that I've overheard conversations where we've worked with people on extended dates. I just, I don't have any specific examples to give you, but I've heard of that happening.
Thank you.
Mr. Maniscalco.
When we look at crash data, when, when a police officer goes to an automobile accident, is it true that in order to get a geographical location, if there's no fixed address, they use the nearest intersection to provide that data? Let's say it's Bush and Florida Avenue, and it happens a little bit farther off the intersection. Is that how it's, how it's done, or no?
So, question's kind of twofold. And when we're reporting a crash, when we report the crash, if it happens at the intersection, the crash report requires at an intersection. If it's not at the intersection, then it will say how many feet away from that intersection. So that's on the actual crash report. So then what that data is transcribed over and used, I don't know the exact thing. I think it's within a couple of feet of the intersection, we still consider it, but once it's outside that scope of the general intersection. So say, for example, you're at an intersection and there's a lot of traffic, it's congestion, you're approaching a red light, you're a hundred feet away, but the cause of that accident was that intersection. But what that exact number is, I can't tell you, but it's within a couple hundred feet of the intersection.
Now, is that data used, for example, if we were to ask you before red light cameras were installed at said intersection and we look at the crash number before and then the crash number after, would those numbers be all mixed together? Let's say I get rear-ended a hundred feet away from the light. It's not at the intersection, but it's nearby, so you use that, that geographical location and distance to determine that for the report. Does that get thrown into the report? Or if we were to say, you know, tell us how the crashes have increased or decreased at that intersection? Would they all be mixed in because it was nearby, or it goes outside of that buffer?
It would depend on how, how we ran the report.
Okay, so it's, it's per officer discretion, depending on a case-by-case basis?
You mean pulling the data?
Well, I mean, you said it depends on you write the report. An officer, one officer may put at the intersection and throw it in and.
No, no, I'm talking about pulling the data. When we actually record the data, the officer has to record that as it is on the crash report. So it actually say at the intersection or within a hundred feet of the intersection and two hundred feet. There's no discretion in that.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Kapine.
Okay, within a hundred feet of the intersection, so the intersection is stated. And if I understood, your question is, that data that is a hundred feet from that intersection, was that included in the numbers of crashes at the intersection?
That I can't tell you, I didn't run that report.
Because I remember years ago, when I first came on council, we had a, we had a restaurant that came in and was looking for, we were discussing it. And I remember the police report. And the police report had all these incidents reported to this location. When we looked at it, they did not happen at that location, they happened in the street nearby. It was not that location was the closest, but it was reported as that location. So when I'm told that it's a hundred feet from the intersection, I remember that discussion of that particular restaurant and how we had to decipher what exactly did happen at that location and what happened outside of that location. But it was all reported as that location. So I have to, without you having the, that information and my past experience with this, I would say yes, that the, that data that happened a hundred feet away from the intersection was included in the intersection report, because that has happened before. And that was the way it was reported, this was 2010.
No, that, and that makes sense, and that's back to my point earlier, is the officer's gonna write the report that it says a hundred feet or two hundred feet away, but whether or not it's included when we run the data and run a report of what's happening in that intersection, that's up, you know, whether it's a hundred feet or two hundred feet, is how we're pulling that report. So that data's there, but it's how we're recalling that data and whether we're looking at it to see if it's related.
And the way you were, it was being recalled in 2010 was that it was happening at this location of this restaurant. But when we delve into it, it was not. It was close, it was on the street, it was nearby, it was in the alley, it was somewhere else, but it was near this, this location. So being that that's the history that I have, then that's what, what I have to think was also done when we had these reports on these intersections, that they didn't actually all happen at the intersection. And that is, that is an issue that I'd like to have cleared up, if possible.
And that was a long time ago, and, and I wasn't available here when that happened. But I can tell you that in some cases, that would make sense if it's a hundred feet away and it's related to the intersection, in your example, it wouldn't make sense. So you would have to look at each individual crash report to see if that made sense for that intersection.
Okay, but it was reported. The, my point is that even if it wa, it might be a long time ago, but it was the history of what was being done. And I didn't, I never heard that it was being, that it had changed any. And that was, it was being reported as happening on that property or at that location. And when we looked into it, it was not necessarily true. Very little, if nothing, happened on that property. It actually happened on the alley, it happened in the street, it happened close by. But that was the closest location to where the incident happened, so it was reported that way. So my point is this, might be 2010, but I haven't heard that it changed any since 2010. And the reporting is that it, there may be reporting that these incidents actually happened in the intersection, and they did not, it could have been another cause. That's my, my, I'd like to, I would really like to hear that, how that was reported. I would like to know, see those numbers and actually see where the incidents happened. So that's what I have to, you can help me, because you don't have those numbers or you don't have that information.
We'd have to research that.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Sure, just a few comments. You know, I've never supported red light cameras, even before I got elected. I had the opportunity to vote against them a few years ago. I think it's an overreach of government. I think it creates a more paranoid, paranoid driver, certainly for me and other people that I know. I'm very careful in general, I'm a very good, safe driver with a good driving record. But when you hit a single parent or a, an individual that's working multiple jobs with a hundred and fifty-eight dollar ticket, even in the appeal process, if they can get it down to a hundred dollars or whatever, whatever the process is, I've never had one. But I know people that have, that can set them back for a significant amount of time. If they're living paycheck to paycheck, if they are in the restaurant industry, they're working on tips, they're trying to make rent, they're trying to put food on the table, they are working multiple jobs, they have several children, whatever it is, I've always been against it. And the data that I remember seeing when we voted on this a few years ago, I didn't see significant difference in before and after. There were certain differences, but, you know, not enough to sway me to, to support these. I know a lot of people have been against these red light cameras, I've never been a fan since the beginning, as I've already mentioned. But, you know, I would not be supporting this moving forward. Just my thoughts.
Okay, Mr. Miranda.
Thank you, Chairman, I just want to say that I don't know where we're going. Are you gonna reward people for taking a red light?
Are we rewarding people?
No, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just talking to myself out loud. What are we doing? Are, how many repeaters do we have, you know, officer?
No, I don't, we'd have to research that.
I would imagine, does anyone know how many repeaters we have? Will come up and, and, because what I want to say is, I don't understand where society is heading, all of us. You comb your hair, you eat lunch in the car, you drive fifty to work. Every day, on Wednesdays, Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, I drive from here to Oldsmar and back. And I do not take the same route. By plan, I buy, because I want to. I want to see what's happening. And every week, there's not one week, and I ask anybody to challenge me, do the same thing I'm gonna ask you to do. When you go to the red light and you see it coming, stop and look around. I guarantee you, once a week, you'll catch somebody taking a red light yourself, where there is no camera. I see that all the time. So what kind of society are we bringing? What are we doing to ourselves? Question was, how many repeaters do we have?
So Tampa has what we call an eighty-two percent recidivism rate, meaning that eighty-two percent of the people who have received a ticket in Tampa did not receive a second one. They changed their behavior, they started driving more safely in your community, which is clearly the goal and what we talked about years ago when we discussed the system to begin with.
So then you're saying that eighteen percent?
Yes, and so eighteen percent, approximately fifteen percent of those have received two tickets and three percent have received three or more.
That's over the life of the program, that's a long time.
What are we saying, congratulations to them? I mean, what are we doing? Is it still a hundred and fifty-eight dollars?
Still a hundred and fifty-eight. Now, remember, that's based on state statute, there's no escalation.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And, and that's why I hope it gets to the state so they can hear it.
Right. And.
I'm not for or against, I'm not talking about money. Somebody loses their life careless or taking a red light camera somehow, and what we're looking at, I'm looking at eighteen percent of them, or fifteen percent of them, basically, who have really taken the challenge to the end. They don't know how to swim, and they're swimming in deep water. They're not gonna last too long before they kill somebody, that's what I'm saying. Sooner or later, it's gonna happen as, if it hasn't happened already.
And the Tampa area does suffer, as you well know, a high pedestrian fatality rate.
Right, Tampa area, the whole state of Florida, we're top two or three in the whole country. So that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying anything more. Thank you very much, Chairman.
All right, anyone else at this time?
Okay, well, I'll just be very brief. I do think that given the amount of attention that has been paid to this topic, both publicly over the past six to nine months and also in here, it would have been nice if the administration had been prepared with more statistics to answer some of what were very predictable questions. But that said, this contract is very similar in structure to the one that we approved originally. And the fact of the matter is that red light running is a major source of traffic fatalities, not just in this community, but period. And, you know, people complain to our offices all the time about speeding. Well, we're not allowed to put speeding cameras out. We're not allowed to replace live officers with speeding cameras. But we are, under state statute, allowed to put out red light cameras, which allow us to deploy law enforcement resources, human law enforcement resources elsewhere. And I would make the argument, I think the fact that eighty-two percent of the people do not receive a second ticket means that in the places that we have these cameras, they do act as a deterrent. And while I have sympathy for the arguments that Mr. Maniscalco made about the onerous nature of the fine, the fact of the matter is that this is preventable behavior. If people are concerned about it, they should make an effort to stop at the lights. Mr. Miranda is a hundred percent right, people are distracted, they're texting, they're combing their hair, they're, they're, they're going too fast, they're, they're, they're in a hurry, they're resisting the safety protocols that we actually put in place to try to affect driver behavior. And it's my opinion that these are an effective tool in making our roadways safer. And I know people don't like them, people don't like a lot of the things that we do in order to slow down the traffic and often make it take a little bit longer to get where you're going. But in my opinion, this works. And it works because, yes, maybe, maybe there are an increase in rear-end accidents at some of these intersections. But when a person runs a red light, they run the risk of killing someone. They run the risk of an accident where there's a T-bone, where there's a head-on collision, and where people are either severely injured or killed. So I think balancing it all out, that it's worth continuing to do. That's my opinion, I know other people feel differently, but that's how I feel.
Mr. Suarez.
Chair, a, a couple of questions. I think that, and maybe you, Mr. Mast, that you said that, or you, Mr. Norton, there are fifty-four total cameras now? The reason I'm asking is because we, based on the information that Mr. Viera pulled from his staff about the police department, we have fifty-five locations. So I'm not sure how that works.
So you have fifty-five locations, but one of those cameras has actually been permanently turned off.
Right, so it's, it's a police.
So you have fifty-four active locations.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
So, and it's only one camera per location, is that what it is?
So it depends on the width. So it depends on the width of the intersection and how many lanes we need to cover. But even, even if we have to use a second camera to catch additional lanes at that location, at that, what we would call an approach, we do not charge you for that second camera. So, so it is, it, it would be, if you approve this, thirty-six hundred, and yes, in some of those, there would be two cameras, but we would not charge you more for that second camera.
So there's a possibility that we actually might have more than fifty-four active cameras, uh, in, at these intersections, based on the need that we have and the way that the intersection is and things like that, correct?
Right. We view it as poles, because those, even those two would be on the same pole, which goes to our ALPR credit. We give you a ten thousand dollar credit per pole for that technology, and that's how we arrived at that number.
Um, you know, and I, I was looking at the numbers, uh, based on what Ms. Little had given us in terms of, and then also in terms of some of the numbers that you all were giving us, which is, it looks to me, and I may be wrong about this, but it looks like the net amount, uh, that now goes to you as of 2018 is two percent less than what we had the year before. Now, why, why that reduction? Because now it, it looks as if we gained, uh, you know, we gained more, we went from fifty-six percent of the total amount that comes out to the city, the net amount, uh, to fifty-eight percent.
Right.
Why, why the reduction in, in, uh, in the contract, or not the contract, in terms of your-
Right. So respectfully, uh, we heard loud and clear, uh, from council-
Are you talking from seventeen to eighteen, or the-
Yeah, from seventeen to eighteen.
Yeah.
Right.
It's just cameras.
Yeah. Camera revenue?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a total amount that's coming in.
If a camera is down, you've had a lot of road construction, imagine that, right? So if, if road construction's down and the camera's not operable, we do not charge.
Got it.
So we may charge less. So, but your revenue may-
I, I just couldn't understand it because it's based on a regular formula. Now, the second, the second question I have is that, uh, the contract is actually, is it a three-year contract with one year, uh, additional that can be approved? Because I, uh, it, or is it a total of five years, one hundred percent?
It's, it's five years, one hundred percent, and, and, and Mr. Spearmun can speak to this if he wants.
I- isn't that a change from the last contract? Did we have a three plus a one, a one plus one?
Yes. And so that's absolutely what it was.
Okay.
The, our competitors, when they showed up at the pre-bid meeting, asked the city of Tampa to consider a five-year term. We were more than willing to go forward with the original structure at three, but it was our competitors who drove the additional years.
I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't some semantical difference when he said five years. It would have been a total of five years, but actually, it is a five-year contract.
It is, and again, not based on our request.
And it's five-year without any, uh, any renew, automatic, uh, renewal that could come up and come before another council, correct?
I think council has the ability-
As opposed to the three, one plus one.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Meaning that it'd have to be rebid after five years. I, and you know, it's a little bit different. That's why I was, I was confused, because our original contract was three, one plus one. Now, when Mr. Spearmun came up, he says it's a five-year contract, but there's no, uh, there's no clause in there that gives you an additional one plus one on there like we did previously, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm doing.
Can I just add though?
Sure.
But it's cancelable, correct?
Oh, yeah.
The count, the contract is cancelable.
That's correct.
It's like thirty days' notice.
That's correct.
Just, just, you have to, we have to eat the cost of the actual camera on the, on the, um-
That's absolutely right.
Yeah. And, and you know, Chair, and I want to, I want to point out that, um, and I've been very publicly in favor of the red light cameras for a lot of different reasons. I've been in three major accidents in my life. Two of those accidents were because people ran red, red lights or traffic devices. One was a stop sign, and one was, and that was right in West Tampa, not that far from where the old, uh, Alcoedes was at. Uh, and one was off of Kennedy and Dale Mayberry, excuse me, Kennedy and, um, and Westshore. And it, the person ran the red light, was coming so fast, they fused their, uh, their car onto my car, and we could not remove it. They had to, they had to, they had to split it up with, you know, the, uh, the power, uh, you know, the jaws of life in order to get it off of there. So I know the importance of making sure that we, we tell people that this is a, uh, a violation that has to be stopped. I like the fact that there's a reduction of eighty-two percent from a first red light camera to a, a recidivism rate is only eighteen percent. That's phenomenal, and I think that's terrific. So I appreciate you all coming all over here and explaining some of the details about, uh, the contract and everything else that's coming forward. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, this is an issue that has what I call a lot of gray in it. You know, obviously, there's the issue Councilman Maniscalco brought up of, of folks having to pay these fines. There's the, the loss of the human element that comes in, in, uh, in, in giving somebody a ticket. Often, a police officer gives you a ticket. They can assess the situation, assess, uh, the individual you're dealing with, and, and that can have a factor. You know, my office, we, we, when I saw this coming up, I, I wanted to look at statistics in terms of, uh, because you hear a lot, you hear a lot of things out in the public in terms of, uh, red light cameras, why they are at certain places, uh, the, the results of red light cameras. You look at a couple of things. First, um, a study from the highway, Florida, uh, Highway Safety Motor Vehicles. And it's kind of, I don't want to call it inconclusive, but there's, there are, uh, statistics that go for red light cameras, and some that could be used against them. Uh, you saw a significant twenty, roughly, uh, almost twenty percent drop in crashes involving non-motors, a very small negligible drop involving, uh, crashes involving running a red light, and actual increases, we all know, of about eleven percent in rear-end collisions. What for me was very, uh, binding, if you will, was this, uh, study that we found from the Insurance Journal, which was a study, uh, brought upon by, uh, the auto insurers, who obviously, I think, have, uh, one of the greatest stakeholders in, in making sure that they're safe drivers because they often make payouts. It indicates that traffic deaths from red light camera crashes go up nearly a third after cities turn off cameras designed to catch motorists in the act, according to a study by the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety. Uh, and it had found that there was an increase in fatal, uh, crashes, and, and it goes into it here. So, you know, you, you look a lot of the studies, um, on the issue of fatalities. I think the statistics are very binding and very, very serious in that regard. There's a very good argument to be made that these, uh, tickets are a significant burden upon working people. If you are earning before taxes, uh, ten dollars an hour, which is above the minimum wage of a little over eight dollars an hour, uh, a ticket like that's a real burden on you. We, we know that and we acknowledge that. But a bigger burden, substantially bigger burden, is if you're a victim of a car crash, is if you or a loved one are a victim of a fatality, or if you're a victim as a pedestrian, that's a bigger burden, a thousand times bigger burden. I'm an attorney. I often deal with those kind of situations. My brother's an attorney, deals in social security disability. I mean, his clients are people who have been involved in serious car crashes. So these are significant burdens too. We have to balance that out here before us in council today. But, thank you.
Mr. Councilman?
Okay.
Real quick, uh, what I, what I'm wondering is, the cities all around us stopped red light cameras.
Well, i- in the immediate, I'm sorry, please, I apologize.
Go ahead, go ahead, tell us what you-
In the immediate area, uh, you have Port Ritchie, New Port Ritchie, Hillsborough County maintains its ten, ten-camera system and signed a renewal with us. Um, um, and you also have, I'm, I mean, Orlando recently renewed-
Excuse me, excuse me, Hillsborough County has ten cameras?
Hillsborough County has ten cameras, yes, ma'am.
You know what the size of Hillsborough County is? Ten cameras?
Well-
We've offered them more.
They won't take it. They didn't take it, right?
No, it has nothing to do-
Keep going with the numbers.
I'm sorry?
Keep going. I'm sorry.
We have Lakeland, Orlando, uh, I don't know how immediate, immediate, you want immediate-
St. Petersburg?
St. Petersburg's canceled several years ago.
Right, Pinellas County?
We didn't have. And a lot of that, i- i- if you'll recall, and, and I'm not an attorney, so, but a lot of that was based on uncertainty in, in the judicial system and whether communities, municipalities were going to have an exposure if they continued to operate their system. What, what was finally decided last year, and maybe we should have addressed that earlier, is the Supreme Court has ruled on this now and created clarity statewide that it is permissible. Um, and so when you go to the point of, of humans don't make the decision, it's not entirely accurate because a member of TPD makes every decision on whether something goes out. We, we have zero ability to make that decision.
Excuse me, real quick. So the, the member of TBD that makes a decision, is that part of the expenses that was reported? The pay, whoever gets paid, the staff that makes the decisions?
So it is housed out near Marine and Air Unit?
Wait, I want to know if that is part of the expenses that was reported.
Councilwoman, the, the expense figures that I reported earlier relate to the, the monies that are paid to the vendor for the service. Does not include the in-house officer.
Does not include the in-house, how many officers, how many, what staff? This is, you know, we're not looking at the full picture here of what it costs the city to, the part that the city, uh, has to cover. And that is part of it. We have staff that's being, uh, used or employed to look at this, when you said the human part. But that's not included in the expense, and it is definitely an expense.
We, we completely agree that there is an expense. Uh, we would tell every one of our clients that, uh, TPD has wisely decided to use their Marine and Air Unit, uh, for their, to run that program. And clearly, that's because that unit has more downtime than some of your other units. And so when they are not, uh, on a call, uh, they are being efficient by, by this program.
They may not be on a call, but they're being paid. And I would like to know what that expense is.
Right.
Look, there's, when I look at St. Pete, I look at Pinellas County, I look at the Sarasota, they did away with them.
Sarasota has a program.
When we are re, being reported that this is the expense, it is not the total expense.
Right. Sarasota actually has a current program.
And can we use that more for pe, police officers to be at those intersections? What I, what I don't understand, the other thing is, those intersections, what monies did we spend to improve them? Seven hundred thousand dollars or something was that number? What was the percent that we, we held the vote because we wanted to see that money being spent at the intersections that were so dangerous? And when the money was spent, how did that improve that, what intersections was that money spent on, and how did it improve the intersections? We don't have any of that information.
Councilwoman, if I can provide you with some additional clarity, please. Um, the expense figure that I gave earlier did not include any in-house TPD officer hours, because in consultation, when we were developing these numbers for reporting purposes, in consultation with TPD, it was explained that, um, they were redeploying officers that were already being paid at that time to review the film, and I'll defer, um, to TPD to give you further clarification. But before I do that, if I could just hit part two of your question related to the, the actual safety program. The actual safety program, and this was provided by our Transportation Department, um, where there were, some of those funds in the program were deployed to Hillsborough Avenue, uh, corridor signal timing and pedestrian signage upgrades was one, one of the projects. And then there is another pending project at Adamo and Fiftieth Street, uh, for operational and safety upgrades for that intersection, where they'll have advanced traffic control equipment, CCTV, and wireless connectivity, uh, to facilitate intersection safety. So we do have some descriptions from our Transportation Department that I gathered before coming over, and we can get you more detail.
That would be very helpful.
All right.
Because, uh, I think we should hold off on this.
So, yes, uh, he was correct. We use our Marine Unit and our Air Service Unit to do that. And we consider it as just like one of our overall public safety duties. So whether they would be doing that, or whether they would be at an intersection, so it's something that is just fulfills our normal daily operations in reviewing that.
I understand, but it's still an expense to the red light camera.
Correct.
Um, again, I don't think we have sufficient information to really make a determination. I don't like people running red lights. And my council members correct, I've seen them, I've seen people run right through red lights. That's not, that's not an issue here. But we would have to have cameras at every intersection, because I've seen them where there are no cameras. So what he's stating is, uh, it's not, it's not doable. We're not going to be able to, to really r- reduce the incidents that are happening. We still are the lo, the highest percentage of fatalities in the country. And we've had red light cameras, so why?
So the, the counterargument would be, and there's always an account argument for everything, is what would it have been if we didn't have it? And tho, those are the unknowns.
Yeah, it could be worse, right? It could be worse than the first in the nation for fatalities.
We, it's just, it's an unknown.
I'm done, I'm done, thank you. I'm done, thank you.
All right, any, anyone else? All right, let me, let me just say this. Uh, um, we, we have, I, I have three weeks left on this council. And, sir, you can sit down. I don't, I don't need to say nothing to you.
Got it.
I, I, I have three weeks left here. And, and I want to say, you know, no one want to see anyone crash their automobiles or run, have a, run a red light camera. But what we don't discuss is the traffic pattern at these intersections. There's a lot of locations where you can't even make a left turn, and you got to sit out there in the middle of the intersection, and wait the two-hundred cars pass, and then the light is turning yellow, and before you can get over it, get by, that, that light is flashing, red. I know could happen to me. So, here's my challenge. Now, here's my challenge to my colleagues. If you're so gungho about red light cameras, then I challenge you to meet me at an intersection, at a designated location and time. And you won't see people running red lights as you claim. You gonna see the traffic pattern. And you can coordinate that with my aid. The date, time, and I will show you the location. Because what are you saying that, that all these red, people are running red lights, it's ridiculous. It's the traffic pattern. That's what people keep ignoring. And all you got to do is drive throughout the city of Tampa, and place where they should have a, 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 a left turn signal light, not there. Place where they should have, where you can turn left, you can't do it. And that is the problem. So, with that being said, Mr. Viera, you want to move Resolution Six, because I would not be supporting this. You want to move Resolution Six?
I move the Resolution. I mean, it's Charlie's.
Oh, it's Charlie, okay, yes, Charlie, I'm sorry. Mr. Miranda. Uh, you want to move Resolution Six?
Uh, I move that, that item, Mr. Six on the red light cameras, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by, uh, uh, Mr. Suarez, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
And is Councilor Redd voting no?
Yes. All right, we go to item number fifty-eight. Yeah, oh, you got to go to? How many people, one, two, three?
I can, I can say.
Okay, one, two, three, four, we, we have five.
Yeah.
Yeah, hey, to put you in as five.
It's okay.
Oh, oh, okay.
I don't want you to get stopped.
Yeah, oh, okay. Item number fifty-eight.
Mr. Chairman, that, um, I don't know who from staff is representing, but that is the, uh, issue creating the diaper-changing facilities. Mr. Viera, that's Mr. Viera's, uh-
Right, so, uh, anyone from staff here? Uh, anyone in public which should speak on item number fifty-eight? All right, we got a motion from, Mr. Suarez.
I think we have.
Wait, 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 wait a minute. Do we have anyone in here who want to speak on item number fifty-eight? All right, uh, uh, so do we have a motion in class?
We do, we are set.
All right.
Sir.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A move for an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, making revisions to the City of Tampa according to ordinances, Chapter Twenty, Public Improvements, Amending Section Twenty-Dash-One Definitions, Creating Section Twenty-Dash-Nine, Diaper-Changing Facilities, Repealing- Section twenty-nine diaper changing facilities, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, providing for separability, providing an effective date.
We got a motion from Mr. Vera, second by Miranda, roll call vote. You don't, yeah, voice roll call, yeah.
Suarez?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Maniscalco, ready?
Yes.
Capin, Miranda?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Motion carried with Maniscalco and Capin being absent.
All right, item number fifty-nine.
Good morning, Councilman Ron Vila, I'm with Historic Preservation. I'm here for the tax ad valorem exemption for the address of nineteen oh-two North Avenida Republic de Cuba. This was reviewed by the Barrio Latino Commission and received approval, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any question from council? All right, anyone in public which should speak on item number fifty-nine?
Move to close.
Second.
We got a motion from Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. Miranda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move item number fifty-nine, file number twenty-eighteen-eight, Chapter twenty-seven, move ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance approving and historic preservation property tax, example, application related to the restoration, renovation, or rehabilitation of certain property owned by the Ebor Tropical LLC located at nineteen oh-two North Avenida Republica de Cuba, Tampa, Florida, and the Ebor City National Historic Landmark District based upon certain findings, providing for notices and property appraisal of Hillsborough County, providing for separability, providing for repeal of all ordinance in conflict, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Suarez, roll call vote.
Suarez?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Capin, Miranda?
Yes.
Vera. Motion carried with Capin and Vera being absent.
Okay, go to item number sixty. If anyone planning on speaking on item sixty, sixty-one and sixty-two, please stand and be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing above the truth?
Item number sixty.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination. This item has, there's been a request to move the second reading to four eighteen. This is a companion item with item number forty.
You want it to April eighteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion please.
We got, we got a motion for that?
So move to, to bring it back on April the eighteenth, item number sixty of the year twenty, or year we in nineteen?
Sir. And the time, sir, is?
At the same time, nine thirty a.m.
Thank you.
Which would not be heard at that time, but that's the time we're going to put it for.
Okay.
All right, we got, we got, we got a motion to reschedule this to April, what do we say?
Eighteenth, the year twenty nineteen.
Eighteen, nine thirty, nine thirty a.m., second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing above the truth?
Okay, item number sixty-one.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination. This is the second reading for the vacating of the right-of-way in Vila Brothers Park. The city's the applicant. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Anyone in public which should speak on item number sixty-one?
Move to close.
Second.
We got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Maniscalco, it's you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for item sixty-one. I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a right-of-way located south of Lemon Street, north of Carmen Street, east of Tampania Avenue, and west of Armenia Avenue, and revised map of West Pines, a subdivision in the city of Tampa Hillsborough County, Florida, the same more, the same being more fully described in Section one hereof, certain, subject to certain easements, reservations, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, providing an effective date.
Second.
I got a motion from, from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Suarez, roll call vote.
Suarez?
Yes.
Cohen?
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Capin?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Vera? Motion carried with Cohen and Capin and Vera being absent.
Okay, item number sixty-two.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination. This application is a request by the city to vacate right-of-ways in Forest Hills Park, and I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, any question from council? Anyone in public which should speak on item number sixty-two?
Move to close.
We got a motion from Mr. Miranda?
Second.
Second, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Suarez, item number sixty-two.
Thank you, Chair. I present ordinance for second reading and adoption, an ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a portion of the right-of-way known as Seneca Avenue, lying south of one hundred and ninth Avenue, north of Bogan Vila, east of Otis Avenue, and west of Ola Avenue in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, the same being more fully described in Section one hereof, subject to certain easement, reservations, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, herein, providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from, from Mr. Suarez, asking about Mr. Maniscalco, please recall your vote.
Suarez?
I mean, it's the roll call vote.
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Capin?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Vera? Motion carried with Cohen, Capin, and Vera being absent.
Okay, it's twelve o'clock, we have, we need a few more time.
Thirty minutes.
Second.
All right, I got a motion to extend it thirty minutes, most from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item sixty-four.
And Chair, I apologize, but I think we need to swear in the folks for sixty-three through sixty-five.
Second, open sixty-three or sixty-five.
I think it was already open, sir, but I think that they need to swear in.
All right.
Anyone, anyone going to speak on item sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, please stand and be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing above the truth?
Yes.
Okay, item sixty-three.
Melanie Cataway, Transportation Planning. I'm here for a brick street removal on a little portion of West Central Avenue. This is right behind the Falk Theater. We needed to vacate a little bit of brick because they need to put in a new Tico pole and they had to put in an island to protect it. So it's this little striped area right here.
Two mile.
Oh. So it's this little area right here, already striped out, wasn't used for parking or anything. And they're now going to, so have just a little island in there where the actual Tico pole is. So it's a very, very small area that had to be just removed the brick.
Are these the islands we're building all over the city?
Well, no, this one specifically, you might remember, I did come here about six months ago due to DOT redoing the, the ped ramps all here on Jackson and Kennedy. But this is just a Tico pole relocation and they just needed to move it out of the sidewalk.
All right. And the bricks are going to be saved by the city?
Yes, and they're come back to the city because it's city property.
All right, thank you.
That's all.
All right, any question from council? All right, petition?
It is, it was us.
This was, it was six?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone in public which should speak on item number sixty-three?
Move to close.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Miranda, the move to resolution, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, sixty-four.
Kristen Moore, Legal Department. Council, this is a request for a third time to reset a public hearing. As you'll recall, last year, we made a change to Section twenty-seven sixty-one of the zoning code to deal with situations where people continuously ask for continuances or fail to notice properly. I have it in front of you. If two more occasions that the item is properly set before you, petitioner either fails to appear, requests a continuance, or fails to perfect public notice, then you have the ability to deem it withdrawn. It is not automatic, it is something that you may do. And so I just wanted to present that because this is the third occasion that this applicant will not be going forward. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
An applicant, you want to give us a justification why you need to?
Yes, good evening, good afternoon, Councilman, this is Mrs. Gail Lanza, we just wanted to ask this time.
Say your name, please.
Todd Seamy, Tampa, Florida. And this is Mrs. Lanza, I'm representing her cousin, is Luis Capdevilla, who had a heart attack and he's been down for two months. He just got out and he would have been here. So we're just asking this one time to have a continuance, we'll be more than happy to come before you, the next available date.
This is the third time?
Yes, sir.
Fourth time? All right, so normally with my policy and standard procedure, we don't grant this, but based on that, I think.
I, I agree, I'm, I'm, Chairman, with all due respect, if you don't mind, I'll move for a, a rehearing continuation of this petition today from, what's the next possible date?
The next day would be July eighteenth.
July eighteenth. And if you don't make that one, bye-bye Lola.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Charlie. God bless you.
Thank you, God bless you.
We got a motion.
God bless you too.
We got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item number sixty-five.
Good morning again, Kristen Moore, Legal Department. This item is a, an, a petition for review of a decision of the Variance Review Board. We have some staff reports being handed out as well as another document that I will hand out to you. This item was heard by the Variance Review Board in December of last year, and they partially approved the request and they partially denied the request. The issue before you today is the parts of the request that were denied. The Variance Review Board did hear testimony from several people at the hearing, and they determined that there was, there was a hardship with respect to the parts that they approved with respect to one of the sheds that was pre-existing. They found that was not a hardship for the additional sheds that were added. As you know, this is a de novo review. We do also have a translator here today on this case, so I will jump up periodically and handle that as well. And to get us kicked off, Mr. Wanda Anthony from Land Development is here to give you a little bit more facts and background of this case.
Hello, Council, Tawanda Anthony, Land Development. Again, this is an appeal hearing for VRB nineteen oh-two. The property is located at fifteen oh-nine West Palhatten Avenue. The hearing date for the variance was December eleventh, twenty eighteen. Per Section twenty-seven one fifty-six, the applicant is seeking to reduce the side yard setback from seven feet to three point five feet, and the rear yard setback from twenty feet to ten feet. In addition, the applicant is also requesting relief from Section twenty-seven two eighty-five to reduce or require green space from twenty-five feet to twenty feet. The property is currently under violation for illegal additions in concrete. I'll orient you with the site. Here's an aerial, West Palhatten, and here's North Rome, and this is the subject property. Here's a photo of the site facing Palhatten. Here's a photo showing the addition on the side yard. Here's a photo showing the addition in the rear. Here's the survey of the addition, the existing conditions on the side. The area is hatched, is the rear addition, and here's the side yard addition. And there's also quite the ground cover that, and you can see where it says concrete, where they've added the illegal concrete. Staff is available for any questions, and natural resources is also here for any questions.
All right, any question from council? Or an applicant?
Kristen Moore, again, Legal Department. At this time, I'd like to call up the applicant and their interpreter to come up. Ma'am, if I could ask you, as the interpreter, to state your name for the record and verify that you'll be providing a true translation for the applicants here today.
My name is Melody Julie, and I will be the Spanish and English interpreter, providing a true and honest interpretation of things that are said in English to Spanish and things that are said in Spanish to English.
Thank you very much, ma'am. If I could ask that the applicant be sworn in in Spanish, Ms. Fox Knowles, if I could trouble you to administer the oath to them and then have it translated.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will translate accurately?
For them, I just swore, that's all right. Yes, I do.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth?
Ustedes solemnemente afirman decir la verdad y nada menos que la verdad? Yes.
Thank you very much.
My name is Fidelina Perez. Mi nombre es Fidelina Perez. You spoke. Usted habló en inglés. Por eso le di. You spoke to me in English, and that's why I looked at you. Quieres hablar en inglés? Do you want to speak in Spanish? Okay, I'll learn Italian. Speak in Spanish. I'm sorry. Do you need it to be turned? What do you need? Okay. Nosotros pusimos este concreto aquí en la parte derecha de la casa. We put this concrete on the right-hand side of our home. Lo pusimos con el objetivo de que sea un concreto para que el agua cuando llueve no entra hacia la casa de nosotros porque el agua que corre de Roma hacia Pojata, la propiedad de nosotros está por debajo del nivel de la calle y todo entraba hacia la propiedad de la casa. The reason we put the concrete there is because whenever it rained, the water that was coming in off of the street, without the concrete, the water was coming into our home because our home is lower level than what it should be, and so we put the concrete there to avoid having the water come into our home.
Ask questions, is it coming into the home, coming into the yard?
Estaba entrando en la casa misma o en el jardín? No, en el jardín, en la casa, y corría por la parte derecha hacia el patio y se inundaba todo. No, it came into the yard, it came into our home, and it also went on the right side of the home and flooded the backyard. Aquí pueden ver cuando yo colocamos el concreto en la parte derecha de la casa, que este que está aquí, porque este es el driveway de la casa. Here is the driveway of our home, and up here where it says concrete is where we put the concrete in front of our home. Podemos observar que al poner el concreto aquí, el agua se, se emposa aquí, todo esto es agua, miren la calle, agua, y teníamos miedo de que la casa se hundiera. Okay, so you can see here where the concrete is, where the water accumulated right here, okay, in this big area in front of where it says concrete, and also on the street out in front of the. May he say something?
Yeah.
Adelante. Está medido, nosotros lo tomamos, porque en una ocasión de lluvia muy fuerte, mi esposa se quejó a alguna persona en la ciudad, y esa persona dijo, la propiedad de ustedes, tomen la medida de ustedes. The reason why we did this, the way that we did it, is because my wife did go to a city council person or a person from the city explaining her fear of what was going to continue to happen if this was not taken care of. They were told, this is your property, you do what you want to do.
I find that highly, I'm not saying it didn't happen, but I find it that highly improbable because my office just last week had received three or four complaints, not here, but on another street that runs into Del Mabry and just south of Cypress, that they had papers, and they made them remove the papers.
Okay.
And because the papers were to put in, not just with sand, but with concrete, we got another problem that is facing those neighbors. So I'm telling you now what I've seen and expressed just last-
So I'm telling you now what I've seen and expressed just last week, although it's not this case, I guess the fence that I was looking at, because you looked at me like there was two fences, a reflection of the fence on the concrete or the water, because by this photo, there's a concrete to the south, I guess, and one to the north. Am I correct?
Okay, yo no estoy diciendo que no es lo que pasó, pero estoy diciendo que es improbable que le dijeran eso y le digo por qué. Porque en las últimas semanas hemos tenido casos iguales, semejantes a lo que ustedes han tenido y tales personas colocaron, no concreto, ya, pero pedazos de concreto, como pisos. Sí, entonces vieron eso la ciudad y dijeron a esas personas, "No, no se puede, tiene que quitarlo." Entonces, corrígeme si estoy mal, pero cuando usted mostró esta foto, o sea, dónde está la foto, okay, hay una, un reflejo en el agua o en algo de otra, como cerca o reja o algo, ¿hay algo más aparte de eso? No, este agua. This is water. Water. Es el concreto que pusimos, esta cerca y del vecino.
Yo te miré un reflejo, ¿o hay otra, otra, otra cerca ahí?
No, there's a reflection, there's just one. It's a reflection. Este es el driveway de nosotros, el driveway donde parqueamos los carros, que aquí este driveway termina aquí en la acera con más o menos de una pulgada de, por encima, y al llover, este concreto que está aquí, este driveway, el agua choca ahí y ya no sube, como lo pueden ver, mire, todo eso es agua que hay ahí y no sube por el concreto. Okay, ¿esto es el driveway? Este es el driveway, mire la... Right here is the driveway. Este es la calle. This is from the street, right up here, this is from the street, okay? That's Powhatan and that is where the water is accumulating. And the water is coming in from the street, ¿está tapando en driveway? Este es el driveway de nosotros donde parqueamos los carros, este es la acera, miren lo divisiona, aquí es la acera. Y este es el agua que llega hasta la acera, pero al subir el driveway un poquito, por una pulgada más, el agua ahora se queda ahí, no sube a este driveway, que si nosotros lo llevamos hasta la calle entonces el agua penetra de nuevo en la propiedad.
What is that metal frame that I see there on top of the right part, that metal there, what is that?
¿Qué es ese metal aquí? No, ese es el corrio de la calle, el buzón. Ah, that's where the mailbox is. And what she was saying is, this is the water on the street. Just one more inch and you can see where it is almost like level with the driveway, okay? One more inch and it will come over the driveway. Si lo llevo hasta la calle, hasta aquí, plena así, el pedacito que falta, el agua vuelve y sube de nuevo, porque esto lo que, esto que está aquí, los sujeta el agua para que no suba. If I were to expand the driveway or make the driveway longer, then the water would come up onto the driveway. So that driveway is actually stopping the water from coming. Eso es en cuanto al driveway, ahora, la estructura de metal, la estructura de metal que esta es... Okay, here's the metal structure. This is what I'm showing you was first the driveway, okay? Now I'm showing you the metal structure. Ahora, esta es la estructura de metal que está, si te paro frente a la casa, la que está en la parte derecha. If you stand in front of the house, this metal structure is on the right-hand side of the house. Mi esposo la removió por completo. My husband took that down completely. Estaba aquí en la parte derecha de la casa y la removió por completo, que solo queda esta que está a continuación de la casa, que por lo que nosotros aplicamos por los... ¿Ditno?
El recuerdo al trabajo que hicimos.
Por la aplicación que hicimos para ver si... Okay, my husband did apply to the city to be able to do what we did here, which was to take down what you saw originally, okay, the metal structure. And this is, right here, is an extension of the house. ¿Ustedes colocaron eso o estaba ahí? No, eso nosotros hicimos, la que estaba aquí pusimos esta, pero removimos la que estaba aquí de la, esta que está aquí, la removimos completa y dejamos la de atrás. So what she's saying is, they took all this that was on the front part of this, they took that all down and then they put this up. ¿Y recibieron permiso de la ciudad? Did you get permits from the city? No, that's why we're here. I would like to add something. Momento, momento señor.
Quiero agregar que la estructura, ese techo, no está sostenida por ninguna pared, solo por la estructura metálica.
The structure, that was the metal structure that was there, was not supported in any way to the house. It was just the metal frame, if you will, holding up the metal. It's al aire libre. And it was just like open air. Que esta que está aquí, que nosotros la utilizamos para reunirlo con la familia en los holiday y ahí nos reunimos, toda esa que está ahí son mi familia que utilizamos el techo para eso, para cubrirnos del agua y el sol y eso, y entonces aquí la utilizamos también para guardar estos equipos que nosotros tenemos y para cubrirlos del sol y el agua, que la misma estructura. ¿Y eso fue antes de que ustedes quitaron la estructura?
May I ask you a question?
No, no, eran dos estructuras, que estamos uniendo toda la de atrás.
We've jumped now from the front of the house to the back of the house.
That's what I just asked for.
All right, and we're getting a little carried away now. What I see here is the back of the house all concrete?
Okay, espera, lo que yo estoy viendo ahora, ¿eso es atrás? A continuación de la propiedad. Like the continuation of the property is behind the house.
How much concrete is there in the back there from...
¿Cuánto concreto hay atrás, en la parte de atrás?
El área que, de la misma medida que tiene ese techo, es el área que tiene el concreto.
Well then, are we saying that the whole backyard from the roof line to the roof line from back, from...
Okay, estamos diciendo que el jardín completo desde el techo de la casa hasta el final del techo que ustedes colocaron.
Todo el área esta.
Míralo aquí.
Okay. Aquí se ve mejor.
Ay, yo creo aquí...
Todo el área esta.
Míralo aquí.
Okay, toda esa área donde está este personal, él lo que ocupa, la estructura esa de metal de la parte de atrás de la casa que yo hice.
Okay, the whole structure, the metal structure in the back of the house that I did, underneath that is all concrete.
I understand why they did it for family things, I understand that, I understand what I'm, but I don't understand. When you have that amount of concrete and that amount of areas covered, the water's gotta go somewhere.
Y porque el lugar tan grande que tiene concreto, el agua tiene que ir a alguna parte, ¿dónde va? No tenemos parte de tierra en el patio, no el patio completo. We don't have any kind of dirt section in our backyard.
That's the problem.
Eso se puede no.
You don't have no grass, you have nothing for the water to fetch.
But that area is ours, sir.
It makes no difference.
No importa.
You cannot concrete side to side.
No se puede colocar en el área de atrás, concreto lado a lado.
El agua cuando cae tiene que ir a un lado y no se va a quedar ahí, va el patio de otro, pa' adelante, uno, dos, dos va a ser, vais pa' allá, pa' acá, pa' atrás o pa' adelante y el problema que estoy mirando y ahora puede ser, puede ser porque yo no sé lo que estoy mirando, si es la verdad o no, es que el agua tiene que rodar y cuando el agua se mueve se va pa' adelante.
Porque nosotros...
I understand, no sé por qué lo siento. Pa' tener comodidad con la familia.
Sí, no, pero yo voy a decir referente a lo que usted dijo, al final de esa estructura de, del techo aluminio tenemos una canal...
Let me speak in English or the other council member will understand. I don't want in any way, I don't want in any way do anything that maybe later on brought up that is...
Tell me where you want me to rewind to, where do you want me to rewind to? Sí, yo le contesté en español porque yo sé, yo sé que él habla español. I answered him in Spanish because I know he speaks Spanish as well, Fidelita just said. Al final de esa estructura nosotros tenemos una canal que recoge el agua. At the end of the structure... No es que la bota del agua, la agua... We have, what do you call it, gutters?
They're very simple, where does it drain to?
¿A dónde va ese agua cuando viene del canal? Ahí mismo la tierra de nosotros. ¿Dónde, frente, atrás? No, atrás, 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 a continuación de ese concreto tenemos un pedazo de tierra en el patio y ella va ahí a mi propiedad. The water goes, is directed to the area in our backyard where there is dirt, because at the end of the concrete, there is dirt in our backyard. Esa agua no va al patio de nadie, es a nuestra propiedad en la tierra. That water does not go to anybody else's property, it stays right there on our property. And that's all I have to say.
Anyone in the public wish to speak on item number 65? Please come forward. Anyone in the public wish to speak on item number 65?
Yes.
Chairman, I ask for additional 15 minutes.
The day's gone on, huh?
Yeah, motion from Mr. Miranda, sent by Mr. Maniscalco, for additional 15 minutes, all the page of motion, say aye. Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. My name's Henry Kramer. I live on Rome Avenue, not far from the subject property. I grew up here in Tampa. I've lived in many of the neighborhoods around in Tampa, Hyde Park, Town and Country, and West Tampa. We've seen our neighborhoods have problems with questionable decision-making that's been made in a variety of places. I'm here today to represent Riverbend Civic Association as a member and a member of the board as well as a homeowner there. We've got to better understand the process that's taking place here so that we can eliminate problems that could occur later on. Elections in the city has brought much debate and much discussion over how the city is managed and governed, so we're very concerned. We have other folks here that will speak more specifically to the issue. In any city discussion, there's discussions that take place of, you've got to know the ins and outs of the cities and how to get to do things and who understands the system. Even in Tampa Bay Times was cited earlier that, "Is the city run by a clique?" That was something that I saw in the paper. We don't know that, but we're trying to find out. We're not Seminole Heights and we're not Tampa Heights, but yet we've had a pond built in our neighborhood to service Tampa Heights. That's, again, not something that we're here to discuss today, but it is part of the reason why we're questioning how this process takes place. By the way, the notification letter that we got from the folks speaks to different setback standards, down to zero foot, if I may, just reduce the side yard from seven foot to zero foot and the rear yard from 20 foot to 10 foot, reduce the rear yard from three foot to zero on the side. So I'm not really sure what's going on, so the question of how you gather, how you accumulate information, and then how you make your decisions, very difficult and I understand that. But again, we're not Tampa Heights, we're not Seminole Heights, but we are Riverbend and we do have the Riverbend going through our neighborhood and we want to protect the properties, the association, and the folks in the neighborhood. And so I'm here to observe, these folks will speak more specifically to the issue of this property at 1509 and I'll get out of the way.
Good morning Counsel, my name is Frank Greco. I have been sworn. I am a resident of the Riverbend neighborhood and also one of the vice presidents of the Civic Association. And we were before the variance review board and at that time, I will show you from city record that it was, the testimony from the owner was that they had purchased the property with the encroachments and I can show you from the tax record that they purchased the property in 2009. First of all, I'd like to say that we are an inclusive neighborhood and we do welcome all residents. However, we do, we would like for them to follow the codes and the ordinances and the laws of the city. They purchased the property in 2009 and they had testified that they purchased the property with the violations. This is the record and as you can see in 2015, there was a complaint that was lodged and that complaint was to work without permits. And the code enforcement inspector did come out and it was noted that it was work without permits and there was an illegal addition to the structure, that was to the home itself. The inspector closed it out saying that it was marked as no violation observed. Now, I will show you through photographs that this is what the 2012 footprint looked like of the property and then the 2015 footprint, which shows the actual home that was doubled in size. This is what the inspector missed. He missed that that home had an addition which equaled the original structure itself. And he closed out the project. Then it comes around 2008.
Those pictures were from the...
From Google Earth.
They're from Google Earth, okay. I just want to make sure because I wasn't sure if they're from the Property Praiser or anyone else.
No, they're, these are from Google Earth and I went back into history and got this.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. And then, again, in 2018, there was another opening and I will read you this because it's very important to what we've been discussing. It said, "Consistent construction of additions in the backyard of property and concrete being poured in the front, no permits pulled for any of the construction. Accessory structure in the backyard may not meet minimum setbacks from the property line and recent additions in the back is creating a problem as water is running off the roof into neighboring yard at 1505 West Powhatan. Property owner there is afraid that she will be getting flooded out because of the runoff." That's the next door neighbor, it does slope downhill. This is the 2018 footprint of the property. As you can see, everything's covered up except for a small little portion in the front. There's 2015 and then this is 2012. I don't know if you can see all those, but...
I can see all. We have 2012, so we can't see that.
Okay, can't see 2012, well I will show you that one. There you go. I just have one more thing to state and that is that this is the doubling out of the assessment records of the property. And we are just asking that you would deny this because we're trying to develop these neighborhoods into viable neighborhoods and it's very difficult to do when the codes aren't followed. And as you can see, part of the problem is a systemic problem throughout the city of Tampa where code enforcement doesn't catch it on the first visit and...
We thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good morning, my name's Deborah Lekinsen, I also live in Riverbend and I was sworn in. And again, the variance, as you can see, the variance review that we all received has a lot of different numbers on it. So today I'm asking you not to approve the variance before you. What I ask, if this was your neighborhood, you represent, your neighborhood or your neighbor, would you want the following variance is approved? Reduce the side yard from seven to zero. Reduce the rear building from three foot to zero. The main house from 20 to 10. The side yard from three foot to zero. Building separation from five foot to zero. Reduce the required green space from 25, our report says 20. Most of the house is surrounded by cement, which means it's a zero separation around the entire house. This is a situation in which they are asking for a variance on something that was already built by them without permits, without inspection and does not meet any code or requirements. They failed to follow the proper procedures while moving forward in the additions of these structures. They failed to submit blueprints for approval, pay the fees for the permits, post the construction permits, have inspectors review the process of the construction, make sure the code approval and final approval gets stamped from the inspector. This could open Pandora's box for everyone who builds a structure then asks for forgiveness. This is unacceptable and should not be approved. Again, I ask if this is your neighborhood or the people you represent or your neighbor, would you approve this? The answer should be no. Again, I'm asking that you do not approve this variance. The main picture that they showed earlier with all that water is when, I believe, when Powhatan and Rome flooded. Our street does not flood like that. They do, we do have some water coming down, but I would question the picture that they showed you. Again, here's their structure. Let's see which way it goes.
Backwards.
Backwards?
That's it.
There's their house with all this cement all around it. Their structures are right on the buildings, right on the property lines. They have all this concrete everywhere. Right here is the addition of the house. That was two thousand eight. This is two thousand nine. You can see the footprint of the house, how small it is. They did an addition on that house, probably doubled the house. Here's the house with no gutters. This is what zero property line looks like. This is what zero property line looks like. And this is where the structure, you can see where they did the addition. There's no gutters. There's no gutters. There's no gutters. There's no gutters on the main house. I ask that you do not approve this variance, and I ask that that code, that code violation looks at this property again to see what violations are actually there. Again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate all that has served on this board as you move forward in other ventures. Again, thank you again.
David Eugene Snyder, fifty-four sixty Riverside Drive. And I'm just going to say one sentence. In two thousand fifteen, if the code inspector would have red flagged the setback in side yard violations, we wouldn't be here. The complaint was closed because there were no visual signs of violations, even though there was an addition to the house that doubled its size without building permits. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mary McCann, twenty-eight twelve North Central Avenue. I'm here to support the Riverbend Civic Association and the concerned neighbors who are worried about the quality of their neighborhood. I'm here to support the den, the variance board's denial of, partial denial of requests, and to uphold the city's, the validity of the city's codes. Why? We have codes for a reason. They protect neighbors from runoffs, from over paved property. They help establish minimum construction standards when plans are reviewed and inspected, hope to prevent cars all over the front and side yards, and to close off lot lines for safety issues and for ventilation. We are here to ask that the city's codes be enforced. To that end, and you know I live in Tampa Heights, I'm here to point out and reiterate that code enforcement dropping the ball is a systemic problem. And what's happened here is what, is what happens, situations blow up when code enforcement blows off citizen complaints. I live by a property where since January of two thousand and twelve, there have been twenty-eight complaints and code cases. These are some ongoing ones. Turned in recently in, excuse me, in October two thousand and eighteen, the inspector came out. You saw a high fence. You saw an illegal, high fence on a corner drive, corner lot. You saw an illegal driveway and apron. The inspector came out and said, gosh, no violations. Really? We need code enforcement to work. You need code enforcement to work. When it doesn't, it wastes your time, our time, city resources, and perhaps worst of all, improvements that should be on the city tax roll. We don't mind doing our part. We write letters to Mr. Regirio, nice letters, asking for cooperation. Again, please, we can't do this without you. You are the backstop. We appreciate the opportunities to come down here and appeal to you for your putting issues in context, for your sound reasoning. Please deny this application, and please, those of you that are staying on the board, encourage code enforcement to do their job. For those of you that are moving on, it's been a pleasure to work with you. We so value what you have done to help neighborhoods like Tampa Heights, Riverbends, and all of us. To the rest of you, namaste, and please continue the good work. Deny. Thank you.
All right, petitioner, the applicant.
Actually, if I could, I just want to provide a little bit of clarity of where we are since there's been a lot of discussion about the various variances that are requested. The variance review board granted some of the variances with respect to one shed that was on the property for some time. They found a hardship with respect to that shed. That was granted. That has not been appealed to you today. So that variance that they have been granted will remain. They get to keep that variance. The question before you today are the three additional variances. It's more than that, but they're in three main pots. There is a main structure setback of the side yard from seven feet to zero feet, and the rear yard for twenty feet to ten feet. That's for the additions to the primary structure. There's also an additional accessory structure, which would require setbacks, reductions from three feet to zero feet for the side, three feet to zero feet for the rear, and five feet to zero feet for building separation. And then the third variance would be to reduce the required green space from twenty-five percent to sixteen percent. Those are the three variances that they have appealed the denial of, that they have asked for your consideration on. As you're aware, this has to be granted under twenty-seven eighty of our code, which looks for a hardship or practical difficulty with respect to the property or a building or structure they're on. And then the council today has the ability to do essentially three different things. You can affirm the decision of the variance review board, which was for denial of those three variances. You can overturn the board decision and grant the variances or just one or two of those variances. And you can add conditions if you desire. And then you also have the ability to remand the board for further consideration. So that's procedurally where we are.
Okay, thank you. All right. Counselor? Pleasure, counsel.
Well, they have five minutes. Don't they have five minutes?
Oh, that's, oh, okay. I thought she was using that. Yeah, yeah. She was explaining, I thought she was...
ustedes tienen la habilidad en este momento de denegar y defender todo lo que se ha dicho en este momento, okay? Adelante. Todos los que dijeron, por favor, no aprueben. Ustedes en este momento tienen su turno de decir lo que dijeron los que no estuvieron acuerdos con lo que dijeron ellos.
Nosotros tenemos que reconocer como familia que es cierto que hicimos sin ningún tipo de autorización, primero por desconocimiento. Eso lo hice yo con mi familia, con las manos. Yo no lo hizo nadie buscando las comodidades de la familia.
First of all, I want to say that, yes, it's true. We did all these things.
Make sure you state his name for the...
Oh, I'm sorry. His name is Juan Calleado.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to start over?
Yeah, and, yeah, now you can translate whatever you say.
Okay. First of all, I will admit that what we have done on our property, we did do without permits or anything because we did not know we had to ask for those permits. What I did there was to help my family, and I did it with my own hands.
Cuando se notificó por parte del compañero inspector, del ciudadano, el caballero, nosotros nos dimos la tarea rápido porque desconocíamos de la ley, de todo este, de todo este tipo de cosas en las que no hemos visto medida. Realmente no sabíamos. Nosotros somos cubanos y no conocíamos la ley de aquí. Rápidamente nos orientaron que debíamos solicitar permiso a la ciudad, que debíamos hacer un plano. Nosotros rápidamente nos reunimos, buscamos la compañía arquitectónica, hicimos los planos, los sumetimos a la ciudad, y estamos en disposición total de cumplir con lo que diga la ley. Si hay que quitarlo, yo había quitado una parte. Si hay que quitarlo todo, lo quitamos todo.
So at, momento. So at that time, the inspector did come. That's when we found out that we're Cubans, we didn't know what the law, what the law was. That's when we found out that what we had done, we had not done it properly. So we quickly started to remedy that with getting the proper permits and doing it, and submitting a plan of what we had done. And I'm, I'm here to tell you today, I want to follow your law. I'm not trying to break your law. If I need to tear the whole thing down with my hands, I will do that.
Cuando el inspector no notificó las violaciones y el ciudadano notificó a nosotros, mi esposo rápidamente quitó este techo que el que queda en la parte derecha, que estaba al lado del vecino de la derecha, y él lo quitó. Aquí se ve ya quitado.
When the inspector let us know that we had violated these things immediately, the structure, the metal structure that was there, he took it down completely. Are you folks being able to see that?
Míralo aquí ya, removido completo, que se ve el espacio completo libre.
And you can see that that's how this open space became like it is, because my husband immediately took that down.
El que queda, el que está a continuación de la casa, es el único que quede, que está aquí. Y si puedo observar este pedacito que está al final, ese es el, la canal completa que está al final de este techo, que es la que recoge el agua.
And if you will look at, where do I point here so you can see? If you will look here at the very end, okay? At the end of this, this is the gutter structure that I told you that comes down this way.
Mírala aquí, esta que está aquí al final es la canal que recoge todo el agua de la parte de atrás del techo, porque en este lado a la derecha hay una pieza que no deja que el agua vote para al lado.
Okay, this back here is actually where the gutter system, where the water comes down. Right here in the front pond, there is a part, or a piece, if you will, that does not allow the water to go over on that right side.
Eso no es cierto, que el agua va para encasel el vecino. Eso no es cierto. Ahí hay una canal.
So it's not true that the water is going over to the neighbor's yard. There's no way for it to get there.
El agua va, la recoge esa canal y cae ahí a continuación de esta pared, que es otra parte que nosotros tenemos en el patio trasero, que es de tierra.
The water that collects up here actually runs down in the backside of this onto the dirt area that we've said that is in our backyard.
Y es por lo que nosotros aplicamos, hicimos la aplicación para ver si se concede lo que estamos pidiendo. No sé por qué actúan así en contra de nosotros, porque nosotros no...
This is the reason why we have come to you, asking for you to help us with our petition. And we don't understand why all these people have come and asked you not to approve what we're asking for. We didn't do it wanting to upset or bother anyone.
Let me just share with you that when the red light went off, I think the time was up.
Oh, okay. El tiempo es aceptable.
So now this council will make a decision. Which direction we want to go.
May we sit down?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, pleasure, counsel.
Well, you know, Chair, if I could, you know, I'm gonna, I'm going to make a motion to deny this appeal from the VRB, VRB nineteen dash oh two. They did not meet...
I got a motion from Mr. Miranda, seconded by Mr. Deere. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Swire.
Thank you, Chair. I, I'm gonna, I'm going to make a motion to deny the application for, for review. None of the hardship that is being said in this particular application is made because of circum, of the circumstances. Everything that's a problem was created by the applicant themselves, including the flooding. There's a reason why we, you should get any kind of engineer or anything else is to make sure that you are not causing flooding, not only on your own yard, but anyone else's. So I, I mean, there is no way that this thing should have ever been built, and I'm going to make a motion later on about what staff should be doing whenever these things come forward in terms of code enforcement. But that is my, that is my motion.
Yes, sir.
To, to affirm the board decision, okay, based purely on the application that was given to us by, by, it's already part of the report, Mr. Shelby.
It is.
I don't, I don't need to reiterate an affirmation of a particular, a particular report that's already put in there.
Because this is a de novo hearing, and you are denying it, you're denying an application. Florida statutes requires the section. May I suggest you make reference to twenty-seven dash eighty?
I will make reference back to the report and to twenty-seven dash eight.
Thank you.
But it is in the record as a report, and that report is what we put on as part of the affirmation, regardless of whether or not it's a de novo hearing. So that is my motion.
All right. We got a motion from Mr. Swire, seconded by Mr. Maniscalco. Discussion by Mr. Miranda.
No, I agree with the two colleagues. I mean, even at the end, they still would have said that this, that, the other, but they created that this, that, the other, not anything one else.
All right. Any further discussion?
And when I see an air conditioner, and I'll stop there. I'm not going to go there.
Okay. All in, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion carried with Cohen and Capin being absent at both.
Okay, we thank you. All right, we go to affirmation reports. Mr. Swire.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a couple items. One is, as we always do here on counsel, there is always a Humane Society event coming up. I find it funny that we are always talking about the Humane Society. I have a feeling that now when I leave counsel, I might get a job as a spokesperson for the Humane Society and come back here every single week. So what we have here is a free shot clinic for dogs, not for all of you people out there, on April sixth, two thousand and nineteen, nine AM to twelve PM at River Tower Park, four oh one East Bird Street. River Tower Park is where, is where that tower that you can see from the interstate is at. It is for your dogs, for their safety and security. Have the dogs on leashes, leashes, and they must be eight weeks or older, and they, for the DA two PP vaccine, and they must be three months or older for the rabies vaccines. And it's limited to the first one thousand dogs. If you've got any other questions, please go to humanesocietytampa.org or call eight one three two five two two zero two seven. Secondly, this weekend, we're going to have Festa Italiana. I'm sure that Mr. Maniscalco was going to mention about it, since he will translate every single performer that shows up on Saturday or Sunday. I think there's a boc, a bocce ball tournament on Saturday. There's no big Sunday thing. So come in this weekend for the Festa Italiana. And Mr. Guido Maniscalco will greet you there in the garb of ancient Italians, and whether it's a toga or some other thing, he will be there for you.
All right. It'll be a sight to see. Okay, Mr. Maniscalco.
Just want to mention that today is April fourth, and of course, it is the fifty-first anniversary of the assassination of Martin Luther King, and we remember him on this day. That's it.
Okay, Mr. Miranda.
Not sure.
Mr. Deere.
Just very quick, I move that the new Tampa players be given its counsel commendation this Sunday by myself.
Okay.
You may, you may, for their play Aladdin Junior. Oh, and I got one more if I may.
But then you already made the motion with the commendation. You already have that, correct?
No. That was for them to come and speak about it.
Okay.
All right, you had a motion from Mr. Deere. Who was seconded by? Seconded by Mr. Miranda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye. And then just very quickly, Mr. Chair, April is Autism Awareness Month. I motion to have a representative from the mayor's Autism Advisory Board and Parks and Recreation make a presentation on the status of their important work on April twenty-fifth at nine AM under ceremonial activities.
Okay, got a motion from Mr. Deere. Deere, seconded by Mr. Maniscalco. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Before you do that, sir, I thought you'd give me a chance to you. All right, yield to Mr. Deere. Let me request a motion to be presented to Jared Brunson, who is a longtime photographer for the Florida Southern Bulletin, and that it be presented to him on April eighteen for his dedicated services to this community.
We have a motion by Councilman Reddick, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, motion from Mr. Miranda, seconded by Mr. Maniscalco. Receiving five all documents. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? He stand adjourned.